Thank you. Good evening. The December 20th special meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Saffronan let me know that he would not be here. Councilmember Revel, here. Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Braithwaite.
Here.
Councilmember Win. Councilmember Nusma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Thank you. And I didn't, I know that Councilmember Kelly is logged on. I could not hear her reply.
Oh, can you hear me now, Dan?
There you go. Yep, perfect.
Okay. Sorry, I did not see you. Thank you for that, Mayor.
And Mayor, can we do an audio check with Councilmember Fleming?
Can you hear me?
We sure can. Thank you. Seven members being present. We have a quorum and are ready to do our work. I want to, so the first item is my public announcements and proclamations. I'm just going to start by requesting everyone's indulgence as I chair my first remote meeting. I can guarantee you that I'm not going to be very good at this, but I will do my best. And I think we'll all just need to work together to figure out how to, how to manage this, this, this format. Just a few quick things. First of all, no one needs me to announce that there were two loaded firearms recovered at ETHS on Thursday. First of all, that was a very difficult and traumatic moment for a lot of people in our community. And I simply wanted to name and acknowledge that. Second of all, I want to thank our police department, which did an extraordinary and professional job in ensuring that everyone was kept safe in a very, very difficult circumstance. So great work and thank you to them. And finally, I just think it really underscores the importance of the conversation that we're having tonight. So as some of you may know, this meeting was called by council members Braithwaite, Burns, and Reed shortly after the tragedy that occurred on November 28th, the shooting on Green Bay. And I just think what happened on Thursday is another indication of the critical urgency of this discussion. So I appreciate that we're having this conversation. I appreciate the work that staff has put in to prepare for tonight. And I, I look forward to us all coming together to do what we can on this, this critical issue. I next want to just, it's obvious, given the fact that we're meeting remotely, but the, the COVID case numbers in town are not great. They're, they're higher than they've been and rising quickly. And I just want to urge everyone to take appropriate precautions. Where this meeting being remote is one precaution that we're taking on a city level. I'm in a regular discussion with the director of Public Human Services, Iago, about what else we may need to do as a city. And I just want to ask that everyone be careful and thoughtful and vigilant, but also not panic. Because of the quality of the vaccines, the great majority of the cases that are occurring are not enormously serious. And so as the case numbers are so high and as the new Omicron variant has reached suburban County and is extraordinarily transmissible, I would just say, get your vaccine. Anyone who's eligible for the vaccine and hasn't yet had it, please be vaccinated. For those of you who have someone in your life who has not yet been vaccinated, now is the time. And for those who have not yet been boosted but are eligible now is the time for that as well. It's going to be critical as we figure out how to, how to get through this. The last item from my announcements is that I'm very pleased to announce a gift of $800,000 given by Northwestern to the city to enable us to purchase a new fire engine. This is something that we need. And it's really, really critical that we do it and enormously, enormously helpful for our ability to do it in a fiscally responsible way that Northwestern was willing to step up and make this contribution. So I want to express my gratitude and appreciation to President Shapiro, to Dave Davis, who obviously has been, you know, working diligently to make sure that we're collaborating on these important issues, including public safety. And just say that, you know, this is an example of how the city and the university can work together to ensure that we're finding mutually beneficial ways to advance the cause of our shared constituents. I look forward to a lot more, a lot more like that. And simply want to again, express my appreciation to Northwestern for, for this really important step. With that, I want to turn it over to Dave Stoneback. We have sorry, so I'm, all right. So let me, let me first turn it over to Dave Stoneback. Kelly Ganderzki is ill and personally, we're all wishing her a very quick recovery. And so in her place, acting interim deputy city manager, Dave Stoneback is acting tonight as city manager and will make the city manager's public announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Actually, I would like to turn it over to Luke Stowe, our CIO and Director of Administrative Services, to talk about the What Works Cities Silver Designation Award. Luke?
Thank you, interim city, interim deputy city manager Stoneback. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, Clark Mendoza, Luke Stowe, Director of Administrative Services, and Chief Information Officer. I'm here virtually tonight to share great news that the city of Evanston has become the smallest city and the first city under population 100,000 in the country to secure What Works Cities certification. Bloomberg Philanthropy's What Works Cities certification is the national gold standard in recognizing cities that use data and evidence to improve residents' lives. We started this journey about four years ago and dozens of staff members across all city departments made contributions. The Bloomberg team was especially impressed with our My City, Your City, Our City initiative, our COVID case and vaccinations data dashboards, and the EPD data transparency hub. In particular, this award would not have been possible without the leadership, perseverance, and tenacity of two former employees, digital services specialist Hillary Biata and ICMA fellow Shanika Hoinkirk. I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask Hillary to share a few words, followed by Shanika.
Hello, I'm Hillary Biata. And I just am, I'm so excited that we're here at this moment tonight. You know, being part of these efforts since the beginning, it's been incredible to see how staff embraced and had an interest and curiosity in using these practices and being able to see how they apply to Evanston, but also highlight what we're already doing. And, you know, when I left, I was, I was hopeful, I was encouraged that we'd be at a moment like tonight. And I knew that this project was in incredible hands with someone as phenomenal as Shanika. So I'll let her introduce you.
Thank you, Hillary. And congratulations, city of Evanston. It's good to see some familiar faces. And for those who do not know who I am, I am Shanika Hoinkirk, as previously stated. And I just want to say that this, Hillary, thank you for the opportunity to work on this initiative. I had no clue what I was doing, so I appreciate you being available for all the questions that I had, along with amazing colleagues along the way who have contributed great data, great research and information. So kudos to all of you. Congratulations. This is a big deal. And for those who are not familiar with What Works Cities, I would advise that you would Google it, you know, do your research on it because it's a really, really big honor. And you all should be very proud that some of the best practices will not only be highlighted, but also will be used for other cities as a template for how they can use their data and information along the way. So congrats and thank you, Hillary, for, you know, bringing it to the platform and allowing the city of Evanston to even have this honor.
Mayor, that concludes our remarks. Our next steps are to move from Silver's level certification to Gold level certification.
And that's all for city manager announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to everybody on the great work. And, you know, I think it's, it's an important recognition of how we're handling these critical issues, especially in this difficult time. I want to thank all of our, our staff, current and former, for the work they put in to enable this. And I just look forward to just building on this achievement. Before we move on, Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge the, the great work of both Hillary and Shanika. So, so thank you both for your contributions. I got to meet and work with Hillary during my time as clerk. And it is said that, and Shanika, of course, is during my time as clerk and alderman. And it is said that we are saying both of you are former employees, you know, but so. But thank you for the work that you contributed to the city. This is a great project. And particularly Hillary, I know that you did a lot of heavy lifting at the beginning for this. So, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And could not agree more on, on all fronts. So thanks, thanks especially to both of you. Before we go on, I should say something that I probably should have said at the very top to allow us to do this remotely. As the result of an executive order issued by Governor JP Pritzker suspending in-person attendance requirements for public meetings, city council members and city staff will be participating in this meeting remotely. Due to public health concerns, residents will not be able to provide public comment in person at the meeting. Those wishing to make public comments at the city council meeting may submit written comments in advance or sign up to provide public comment by phone or video during the meeting by completing the city clerk's, clerk, the city clerk's office's online form And because this decision was made relatively recently, owing to the recent uptick in the case numbers, some people had already signed up to give public comment in person when that change is made. My understanding is they've all been sent emails of a Zoom link and are prepared to give public comments via Zoom tonight. I also want to make an additional point, just forgive me for returning to my, my previous comments, that the, the relationship between the city of Evanston and Northwestern University is, is complex. And it's a really, really pivotal discussion point for our city council because of the central role that the university plays in, in this community in so many ways, and many good and some challenging. And, you know, we, we had an election recently where this topic was, was very much on a lot of folks' minds. And there's one person I really want to, want to call out who's been really central to these discussions, even since before she was elected and certainly since, who's Councilmember Kelly, who, you know, has, has really been dogged and sitting down and trying to find ways to ensure that the city and Northwestern are working together in a way that is benefiting all parties, benefiting the residents, the students, the faculty, and the taxpayers. And the research and community engagement that she did around this issue, I think, had a central, central role in the negotiation that led to the $800,000 contribution that I mentioned earlier. So I think it's important to, to thank her for that as well and to, to lay that out as a, as a model for, for the kind of community-driven process that will achieve success that's beneficial again to all parties. So thank you, thank you, Councilmember, for that. And now I want to turn it over to Clerk Mendoza for communications from the city clerk.
I just wanted to let everyone know that Zoom will have a form for those wanting to participate in our panel to interview the next city manager. Our council members will receive that form. And as we set, more details about the lottery to have people in the community selected randomly, we will put those out. And I also wanted to make sure the mayor knows, I believe we do have to do suspension of the rules to participate remotely. And I can email someone that language. And our rules chair did confirm that as well. Thank you. Everybody nodding yes.
Thank you, clerk. And again, I apologize. This is my first, my first rodeo of this type. But I would like us to do that before public comment. I think it's important that we just handle things properly. So let me just quickly.
Mr. Serious Mayor, I just want to make a really brief comment or a follow-up to your mayor's announcements before we start public comments?
Go ahead, Councilmember.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to give a special shout out. I see that he is on the Zoom. I know that you had acknowledged our police department. If I could just acknowledge the wonderful work of SRO Lois Spels. I don't have all the details and I know we're still working on the current case, but I just wanted to give him a shout out for his on-the-spot thinking and ability to minimize what could have been a much more difficult situation, as well as for the SRO's partnership with the staff, as well as the teachers to keep our most precious assets. And those are our future leaders at the high school. I also wanted to acknowledge Chief Farms, Deputy Chief Jody Wright. I understood that he was on the command scene. And as you did, all the Evanston Police Department staff that worked closely with our high school security to manage this situation last Thursday. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember, for that. And now I believe Councilmember Nusma is recognized for a motion.
Sorry, I'm just pulling up the text here.
We've somehow created a tradition of the fourth ward alderman being the motioner of all things.
As a result of an, of an executive order issued by Governor Pritzker suspending in-person attendance requirements for public meetings, city council members and city staff will be participating in this meeting remotely. Due to public health concerns, residents will not be able to provide public comment in person at the meeting. Those wishing to make public comments at the city council meeting may submit written comments in advance or sign up to provide public comment by phone or video during the meeting. I move suspension of the rules. Here we go, allowing for remote participation due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and then executive order issued by Governor Pritzker, doing what I said a minute ago.
Councilmember Nusma moves to suspend the rules to allow us to meet remotely. Councilmember Revel, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
All right, aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Win? Sorry, Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion passes and we're allowed to meet remotely, which is good because we've been doing it for 20 minutes. Thank you, everyone, for your, again, your intelligence. So this brings us to public comment. Today, obviously, public comment will all be remote. Every speaker will be given two and a half minutes. And so we'll begin with Brian Wires, who will be followed by Dolores Holmes, and then Endona. It's just listed here as Endona, but I, I'm guessing as Endona Ubayi. So first, Brian Wires. Brian Wires is not in the Zoom. We'll begin with Dolores Holmes, followed by Endona, followed by Rodney Green. Ms. Holmes?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor Bis and to the city council and city clerk. At the last fifth ward meeting, I stated that I was holding Alderman Burns, Reed, Braithwaite, and Revel, because she was there, personally responsible for getting the city to really work on this issue of violence, this current issue. I'm here tonight because I want to include the rest of you, the remainder of the council and you two, Mayor Bis. Violence and youth in our community is not new, especially for people who look like me. In the past, and this was before I was director of Family Focus and while I served 12 years on the council, we have all worked collaboratively together. Violence is not a city, police, agency, family problem. It is a community problem. In, in July of 2005, the death of one young man in our community who was born and raised here caused the community members to begin to meet and
Okay, that is.
I beg your pardon?
No, just go ahead. I think someone
Okay, began to meet. And after several months of meeting, there was a community-wide meeting held at Fleetwood. The mission of that meeting was uniting resources to help develop and support productive, skill, community, contributing Black youth and families. This was the founding event of the Evanston Youth Initiative. The request was a youth division from the city of Evanston. I'm giving this history because sometimes we tend lately to throw out the baby with the bathwater. The proposal before you tonight speaks of a holistic program and approach. This includes the families, the youth, and the communities that they live in. It addresses the obstacles of housing, employment, lack of opportunity, counseling, trauma that goes unattended, and lots of really focused on primary prevention issues. In 2006, 2006 was sort of the beginning for me in terms of how we really began to highlight violence in this community. However, there were some other important milestones. I want to mention that in 2007, the city had Sheila McCorkle, who was an intern working in the city manager's office. And she developed all of the background for the youth and young adult division. And in 2007, also, actually, she started in 2006 to work on it. Saul Anderson was hired as the first director with only Saul and a very small budget, if I remember. I can't remember the exact amount, but it was only him. And still, we continue to have violence in our community and murders. That was really very upsetting. In 2010, when we had six deaths, and we, the community, started praying, and I'm saying the faith community, at that time, Pastor Williams, Emmett Williams at Springfield was new pastor in town. And he said, well, we're going to pray every Saturday. I think he kept that up for two years. Every corner in the fifth ward was prayed on every Saturday morning, rain or shine. And then 2014, when Mayor Tisdale and pastor, at that time, the interim pastor at Second Baptist, Avery, called a citywide meeting and asked every sector in the community what they could do. Out of that came was the creation of Evanston On It. And I think I'm also right, in 2014, Alderman Burns is when you started I Want to Live project, I believe, because we were all around focusing on violence. We have always included everyone in the community who wants to be involved. Can I do it without the community? It's not a police, I'm saying it again, it's not a police problem, it's not a fifth ward problem. It's a community problem, and we need to treat it as it is. I leave you with this. If you live, work, pray, or pray in Evanston, then own what happens in Evanston, and let's all work to help resolve it. So there are people here in the community who want to really help do this. We can do this within our own community, and I really want to emphasize that. So I hope that you all are listening to that, but we just have to really pull the people together. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Endona, who will be followed by Rodney Green and then Patrick Keenan Devlin.
I'm trying to turn on my camera. It's not allowing me.
Can someone on the city's end turn on the camera?
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor Bis and city council, for holding this special meeting tonight. And I'm really saddened that it has to be had. But one of the issues that I've been speaking about for the past three years since I've been back in Evanston, and I grew up here, is how our community is very good at brushing under the rug the true issues that exist and have always existed, especially in the Black community here in Evanston. My generation, I'm about to be 45, many of us don't go to church. Many of us are not involved in some of the organizations that are established here in Evanston. There are many among us that cannot afford to pay for programs for our children. Even the city of Evanston, who's just received a donation of $800,000, only gives a 50% scholarship to families in need to place their children in programs. So we find ourselves in a city where you have a massive income gap. We have a city of people that do not want to acknowledge that the issues in our town are multifaceted. Part economic, part familial, part, you know, mental, some part racial. But we have to be willing to acknowledge that and understand that in order for something to be taken care of as far as putting an end to the violence, we have to focus on the children. And not every family is capable of providing the support for their children. We have families who work long hours, who cannot be there. We have families who might not have parents who are capable of giving the proper guidance to their kids. And we have to acknowledge that. We live in a town that many of us do not want to face the facts of what is happening, which is why it's spilling out not only in the high school. Also, recently, they're talking about violence going towards Central Street. But what about the violence that has been going on in the fifth ward? Something needs to be done. And it can't just be another press conference or another slight conversation when it starts to affect other people outside of the Black and Brown community. Our children need support, and it has to come from somewhere. Because if it's not addressed, it's going to get worse. And I'm sorry to say that.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rodney Green, who will be followed by Patrick Keenan Devlin and then Kristin Kennard.
Just want to say good evening, Mayor Bis, Clerk Mendoza, and city council. I'm here tonight to just start saying, I truly appreciate the efforts of Community Service Manager Audrey Thompson and her efforts to address the ongoing increase of youth-related violence that has gripped this community. And I'm in total support of allocating more of the budgetary funds to address this problem. I also agree wholeheartedly with the programs to educate and to provide interventionally strategies to curb this influx of gun violence in our city. But I do not believe that the increase in gun violence among our youth and for those from outside of our community will cease anytime soon in the near future. And why do I say this? It's for a long time, we have And why do I say this? It's for a long time, we have kept our heads in the sand like ostriches, denying the existence of gang affiliations here in Evanston and hoping the violence does not arrive in our backyard. What do I mean by this? We know that these youths are not born gun-toting kids, but they're trained and they're taught by their parents, by their uncles, by their other relatives. And they're taught in the way that they say, "If someone do you wrong, then you take care of it with a gun or some kind of violence." What has to happen is not that we're looking for... Yeah, the kids do need help, but also the parents have to be responsible for their children. They too have to be held into, held in accountability of making sure that that child is raised where they are. Now, I do believe that once this happens, it doesn't always happen in the schools or the churches, but it does happen in the home. So we have to make sure that the parents, grandparents, uncles, and relatives are educated as well, that they do not look at using guns and violence to solve problems. We need to stop being reactive and become more proactive. And I look to see that something like this would happen, that we'd get more proactive in dealing with the youth and the parents in this community. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Patrick Keenan-Davlin, who will be followed by Kristin Kennard and then Jenny Karlovitz.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Evanston City Council. I am Patrick Keenan-Davlin, and I serve as the Executive Director of the Moran Center for Youth Advocacy. Moran Center is a member of the Evanston Collective, which is a collaboration of Evanston's youth and emerging adult social service organizations in town, which includes the City of Evanston's Youth and Young Adult Division, Connections for the Homeless, Kurt's Cafe, Erie Family Health Centers, Infant Welfare Society of Evanston, Peer Services, Youth Job Center, and Youth and Opportunity United. The recent violence in Evanston mirrors national trends. As a community, we're not obviously immune to COVID-19, but with a myriad of destabilizing factors that have led to increases in violence. The current crisis, however, should not undermine our faith in longstanding programming. Rather, it should compel us to make greater investments in that infrastructure and provide opportunities for system improvement based on evaluation and innovation. For this reason, the Moran Center, along with the Evanston Collective, strongly urge the council to adopt SP2 on your agenda tonight. The proposal, "Increase Funding," will already know prevents and stems youth violence. The funding will support programming that promotes healthy family environments, making this revitalized effort a two-generation approach, provides quality educational supports, strengthens employment opportunities like advocating for a city to be a second-chance employer, connects youth to caring adults in activities like youth outreach, creates protective community environments, and intervenes in a conflict to lessen harms and prevent future risks like the Restorative and Supportive Services Program. The proposal makes critical investments in the city's current effective programming and partnerships while simultaneously providing the Youth and Young Adult Division with the necessary flexibility in creatively responding to emerging needs. Moreover, the proposal helps actualize many of the goals and objectives outlined by the mayor's Reimagining Public Safety Committee's work by calling for the expansion of the city's programming to serve emerging adults up to the age of 29. And for these reasons, once again, we would urge approval of SP2 to strengthen our city's youth and community violence intervention and prevention strategies. And just in closing, Mr. Mayor, we would urge the entire city government, every department, and the whole community to come together to address the root causes of youth violence. We cannot rely on just one strategy or even one division. We have to take a both-and approach, not either-or. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Kristin Kennard, followed by Jenny Karlovitz, and then Kirsten Dorelio.
Good evening, Mayor Bis and members of the City Council. My name is Kristin Kennard, and I am the Deputy Director at the Moran Center. As a direct response to the tragic shooting of three young people in March of this year, members of the Evanston Collective, Evanston's Youth and Emerging Adult Collaborative gathered to explore ways to better support some of the most vulnerable and at-risk youth and young adults in our community. With the input of the young people themselves, the My City, Your City, Our City initiative was created. One of the programs created within this initiative is the Crisis Response Team. At least one individual from each collective organization was identified, all with varying professional backgrounds, which include but are not limited to trauma-informed, clinically-trained mental health professionals, street outreach workers, restorative justice experts, and executive directors. Within 24 hours of a community crisis such as an incident of gun violence, the Crisis Response Team convenes to discuss the situation, identify who amongst us already has relationships with those who were directly or indirectly affected, work together with the affected individuals in making a plan to be sure that they are supported moving forward, and provide space and support in an effort to mitigate any potential for subsequent acts of violence. The collaborative nature of this team allows us to utilize not-for-profit organizations with all different expertise and resources to wrap around these young people and their families. Crisis response is important, but we also recognize that prevention services are just as crucial. By opening community centers spurred on by high school-age students themselves and led by the YYA team, the My City, Your City, Our City initiative provided safe spaces for hundreds of youth to go throughout the summer. These spaces allowed for young people to engage in restorative justice opportunities, deep conversations, enrichment activities, and mentorship relationships. Although youth violence has increased during the COVID-19 pandemic, we did see a decrease this past summer. The success of this programming taught us that we need to expand these services to reach more young people ages 11 to 29 years old. I've been working as a clinician at the Moran Center for over 12 years. More than 90% of my current caseload are emerging adults between the ages of 18 to 26 who can be identified as some of the most vulnerable to violence in our community. This partnership with YYA and the other collective agencies has provided a way to identify and focus on those individuals and their families in a collaborative manner. The YYA Street Outreach Team is the number-one place that the Moran Center Mental Health Team refers clients to. We work together as a team to best support these individuals. The expansion of this team is crucial. It is for these reasons that I'm asking the City Council to approve SP2. I appreciate your time and deep consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jenny Karlovitz, who will be followed by Kirsten Dorelio and then Belva Hill.
Hi, I'm Jenny Karlovitz. I am a student of nonviolence. I support using ARPA funds for violence prevention by Health and Human Services. Since the ARPA funds are limited, I propose to continue and increase funding for violence prevention by defunding the police. The police use violence, and violence will not end violence, and all our children are precious assets, and I don't believe the police treat all our children equally. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kirsten Dorelio, followed by Belva Hill, and then Lonnie Wilson.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. I'm Carolyn Murray, who many of you know is a lifelong Fifth Ward resident and a dedicated community activist, really wanted to be here tonight, but she has laryngitis and has lost her voice. So she asked me to share her comments tonight so that she doesn't symbolically lose her voice. Carolyn was a founding member of the group of activists that was mentioned by Ms. Holmes, who many years ago started developing what is now the Youth and Young Adult Services Division. And here are Carolyn's verbatim comments that she sent to me. "The issue of gun violence has traumatized the Black community for decades, and our city is very comfortable to allow the stigma of the Fifth and other Black communities to continue, as if it's not a city problem if it happens on the other side of town. Even though I have repeatedly spoken out to City Council members and to my community for over 20 years, this problem of unaddressed gun violence in our city continues to get worse. With the increase of gun accessibility, domestic terrorism, and agitated social media conflicts, the threat of violence is definitely here in our Evanston community, and strategic plans are needed by an organized task force, and they are overdue. Every year, at least one Black male will be murdered in Evanston. Systematically, the council has turned deaf ears to our community, crying out for help. There have been no attempts to continuously meet with the Fifth Ward to address our resident concerns about violence and the traumatizing effects it has had on our children whom have witnessed or heard repeated gunshots on their block and outside their windows. Nothing, no help, and then only three minutes to comment on all the years of failed attempts for programs that we supported and then were failed to deliver: outreach programs, center spaces, employees. Then what little help was offered was dismantled due to political self-interest, a lack of funding to the seasonal war zone you allowed us to live in is just downright pathetic. When I planned my first gun buyback nine years ago, it was because I heard more guns outside... Sorry. I heard more guns outside my window than my service members stationed in Iraq. But I'm here again. I'm asking for real, serious resources: Chicago Urban League, or Boys Club, Girls Club, or so many others with proven results, who really care and want to prevent violence and not just respond after another murder. Remember that I said nine years ago, if you didn't start looking at this gun violence problem seriously, it would be nothing for us to have the same type of mass shootings going on across the country, and now look at what my community is dealing with. Shame on you to not even consider our God-given right to be safe when we go outside. To date, the annual gun buybacks, with hard work, we're able, over the years, to take 353 guns off the streets by ourselves, a community who just wanted to do something. No city funds, but organizations and youth, like my son, who just wanted to prevent someone else from being killed. So we care in our ward, and we would really like this council to really start caring, too." Carolyn Murray's words. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Belva Hill, followed by Lonnie Wilson, and then Mary Rosinski. Is Belva Hill in the Zoom?
Now, can you hear me?
Yep, sure can.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for your time, council members, and community of Evanston. I'd like to address the fact that I'm a mother of a son that is caught up in the penal institution due to gun violence. I believe that in consideration of SB program, that expanding funding doesn't mean you cut the other funding that's already in place. I believe in programs like Officer and the Gentleman, which my son never had the benefit of. It has been proven time and time again that we are kind of like a cafeteria city where we set the lunch out, and then when it gets cold, we take it back in. We need to be continual with this. We need to reach generation after generation after generation of people. Some of the children that are being affected right now, between the ages of 18 and 24, are parents theirself. They've been lost to gun violence. Their children are growing up with chips on their shoulder. The crisis intervention and the holistic approach that has been mentioned before needs to be everlasting and fore-reaching. The other thing I'd like to say, that the recent violence in Evanston, it doesn't matter that whether it's our Evanston youths or not, but they have been victims of crimes from people from the outside. I'd like it to be addressed that there's a way to protect our kids when they're not doing anything, that they have a safety here in their home. But when they're being antagonized by individuals across the internet, you know, that's a big part in the situation, that something is being done swift to intervene on their behalf. I don't believe all kids leave the house wanting to commit crimes. I believe they want to do right, but I believe that their avenues are exhausted. I believe that they have no safe place to turn, sometimes nowhere to talk to. I believe the Officer and the Gentleman program is needing to expand, or a program like it also be annexed with it and shared of the services so that it can be expanded and expounded on and grow and develop. So I hope that any consideration of the funding is also considered for expansion of that program, and we need to reach our girls. We're finding that the girls do play a big part in assisting and helping as well. There's no much more that I can say, but I thank you for your time, and I hope there's some consideration to be given that it does expand and the funding be extended to programs like Officer and the Gentleman. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lonnie Wilson, who will be followed by Mary Rosinski and then Ray Friedman. Is Lonnie Wilson there? Wilson? If not, we'll move ahead with Mary Rosinski, who will be followed by Ray Friedman and then Ralph Edwards.
Hi, and good afternoon or evening, everyone on console, and thank you for hosting this important discussion. I read the packet, and I think it sounds really well thought out, and covering a multiple multitude of different paths that will help ultimately our youth. I think it's unfortunate that we started dismantling an important element in the Youth Services Department when we let Kevin Brown go, because he was doing so much great work on the preventative. Hundreds of citizens came and talked to the 2019 council, but that's water under the bridge. But I think we can rebuild the network which he was trying to get at and his workers getting out on the streets. And there's all the other elements that are in the plan of in the Moran Center and the jobs training. And I would hope that after the ARPA funds run out, that we can continue this indefinitely, at least make a commitment for five, 10, 15 years to have the jobs training, the youth services programming, and part of that funding could come from the Five Fives TIF funds, as that was one of the issues that they have. That was one of the conditions that they had promoted that with, and I think it's an excellent use of our city funds. The other thing I'd like to just put out there as a thought as you take this conversation further, the jobs training element has to be more than just a classroom somewhere. It has to be, and I would suggest thinking about use of the Civic Center as a place that can do a lot, can act as a hub for our services that we are working on. So I want to thank all the previous speakers, because every one of them was so on target. And this issue, you know, we keep saying we're going to talk about it. I was, my daughter was good friends with Dejay, and we talked about, I remember, all those meetings, and we talked about it, and it was, it was just so sad. We haven't proceeded far enough along to support the groups like Carolyn Murray and all the other groups that have been trying to deal with this problem on a consistent, consistent, consistent priority budget item. So thank you for putting it out there now, and I hope that this becomes very successful.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Ray Friedman, who is followed by Ralph Edwards and then Marquise Butterstone.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Bis, City Council, interim city manager, and city clerk. First, I'd like to say I agree with everybody who spoke before me. We need more to curb violence in the city and all over. So first, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Feliz Navidad, happy and healthy New Year to everyone. I have my usual city public, my public comment is about finances, money. I'm very puzzled and concerned after reading the news release, 1250, about the Bloomberg philanthropies recognizing Evanston from agreeing that it's a great award. I appreciate all the work that everybody has done to receive that award, but it seems that we're missing a bigger picture here. That report, the reason we got the award, is it based on data, okay? So we need to know what this data is. Where's the data coming from? Is the data coming from, it says it's coming from residents. So just nine days before the Bloomberg report was released, there was a news conference at City Hall with Mayor Bis, CABG, and Reclaim Evanston to voice concerns about the lack of transparency, lack of accountability, lack of public participation, and to specifically address why there's a huge lack of public input, which I believe would be the data that was referred to in the Bloomberg report. An article written by Bob Seidenberg, printed on the Roundtable on 12/7, talks about that news conference. Talks about that news conference. I thank Alvaro, Diane Goldring, Bennett Johnson, Leslie Williams, Rick Marsh, Elliot Vation. Elliot Harnett for heading up that news conference. And also thanks to Gail Spector, Sebastian Moles, and Nick Korzenowski for your input of the many Evanston issues that need to be addressed. We understand, we understand you have narrowed down the number of candidates for city manager to two. Please share with us the specific data you used from each of the residents that narrowed your search down to two. Specifically residents that are not employees of Evanston. Um, this is a huge problem in Evanston that you're not including the residents in major decisions. That you are making for all of us. Please correct that. Thank you very much. Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Ralph Edwards, followed by Marquise Weatherspoon, and then Gregory Sherman, Jr.
Can you guys hear me?
Uh, yes, we can.
Yeah, how you doing, man? Uh, for you all that don't know, my name is Ralph Edwards. I am the Northside Regional Director of ECCSC. Um, before I begin, I want to just say, uh, with all due respect, man, and with all my blessings and everything. I want to, uh, send a shout out to you all's violence prevention team, Aubrey, Stacy. And all those guys over there that's doing an excellent job. Um, just to move forward, um, I've been doing this line of work for eleven years out of Rogers Park in the Uptown. Um, we're also based out of, um, Dalton, and we're Maywood. Um, and we're currently announced right now as we speak, and I just want to say one thing, couple of things. First, when it comes to violence in our community, textbooks can't teach you, um, resolutions and problem fixing situations. Textbooks cannot do that. With all due respect, you all need to have professionals that's involved in this gang situation come in. And help you guys out, just like technology. You guys can be outdated overnight, you know what I'm saying? So I just want to let you guys know that my ECCSC is here, um, to help in all endeavors, man, to help the team out. Uh, any way, form, or fashion, if they need, with any kind of assistance from us. Um, my baby goes to ECHS, have a lot of friends and family that lives in, uh, the Evanston area. And just to let you know that, man, we're here to lend our professionalism. When it comes to gang culture and activity throughout the city of Chicago, and we're here for you guys. That's all.
Thank you. The next speaker is Marquise Weatherspoon, who will be followed by Gregory Sherman, Jr., and then Brooke Murphy-Ruthan.
Good evening, city council members, uh, Mayor Biss and Clerk Mendoza. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Um, I'm coming on behalf of the Youth and Young Adult Division. Um, in full support that, uh, they be provided with additional, um, funding to support our children. Because I know, um, as a parent of, uh, one of the recipients of their service, that. Um, the work that they are doing, uh, works and it is impactful. Uh, my son was a, uh, was, was a handful. I'll, I'll just say that. Um, and he, um, was at risk, um, doing, uh, engaging in a lot of activity that. Obviously, a mother would not approve of, um, but. Uh, the Youth and Young Development Team, uh, they never gave up on him. They never, they always, uh, came and supported me and the, the entire family. Um, always was there for him to, uh, give him, uh, support in whatever it was that he needed. And also with the connection with, um, uh, the Moran Center. Uh, he has been able to, um, reintegrate, reintegrate back into society after paying his debt to society. And now is a employee of the youth with the Youth and Young Development, um, Division. Um, now helping at-risk teens to not go down the same path that he once was going down. Um, so, um, I've seen that they are the, the first responders for our children, even in the schools. Um, they show up in the school, uh, and with the restorative justice, um. You know, practice that they have and come to assist our, our youth in some very difficult times. And it is, it is very crucial, um, that we continue to have this division to be able to be the frontline. For our crisis response, um, as they are doing an amazing job. And need any, any other supports that we can provide them, um, in the community. Um, I, I know that, uh, they would be able to absolutely do more. So I just would like that you would consider, um, additional funding for this great, uh, department. And for them to continue to, uh, impact the lives of our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Gregory Sherman, Jr., followed by Brooke Murphy-Ruthan. Followed by Noah Polish.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, happy Monday, and thank you, Mayor Bliss, um, for this opportunity. Uh, I would like to, um, reiterate to what Ralph Edwards said by, um, thanking this division. Uh, for allowing us to assist and assisting us during these most crisis times, these most tragic times. I'm like to, and I'm sorry, uh, let me back up. My name is Gregory Sherman. And my title is Director of Community Outreach and Engagement for ECCSC. Um, we have been in Evanston during these most recent tragic events. And I will say what Ralph said, we are here to support the, the town. We are here to support you any way possible, and I'd like to personally thank Ms. Aubrey Thompson, Tom, um, for her support. And helping with the families of the victims of the tragedies. And I also would like to thank, um, Alderman Burns for his swift action. And assisting us to be able to help with our personal friends and families that were affected by the tragedies. Um, and we just look forward to, as most of the speakers said, preventing the violence, uh. More than responding. That's all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Uh, the next speaker is Brooke Murphy-Ruthan, who will be followed by Noah Polish, and then Tina Payton.
Hi there. Um, I'm heartened to hear that ECCSC is involved in this. Uh, because I reached out to my friend Wendy Jones, who works with Arnie Duncan at Chicago Prep. And when none of the council members responded to my request to talk to Wendy, um, I was a little disturbed, so, um. Anyway, there's that. Um, I was at the high school last week, Thursday, when my kids were calling me. From the high school, wondering what was happening, and I got on the phone immediately and got an answer within twelve minutes. I had to pull out every stop that I had, uh, using every contact I had, and I, I got answers fast. Um, it's clear to me that some people on this council are not ready for prime time. We're right now in the deep end of the inland sea that we have. And there are clear voices out here. We need a voice. We need a vision. We need people like Claire Kelly. Devin Reed, Patrick Keenan Devlin, Mayor Biss, uh, Pastor Neighbors with a strong voice. And now is not the time to just sit on the sidelines. This is for the grownups, and I'm more than upset because people need their, if, if there is violence going on, they need to be heard. They need their hands busy, and they need to be, uh, like a listening voice if somebody is thinking of doing something bad. And one thing that comes to mind was on my birthday this last year, which happened to fall on Yom Kippur, and I'm a shi- shiksa. But I know what it is, because I used to go to a show, because my ex used to play at one, is that, um. This kid was talking about hurting herself, and just by me being there, talking with her on her day off school. And she happened to say that she had some self-harming tendencies. There needs to be people out in the community who are ready for the task to listen to others who might be thinking. Of doing something wrong, and rather than blame them and shame them. Use Dr. Bruce Perry's book, What Happened to You, rather than What's Wrong With You and Fingerpoint. That is not the tool that's needed right now. We need to expect the best and prepare for the worst. We need to overshoot the landing field and pretend that we are like Navy SEALs psychologically or Blue Angels. Where they're flying within millimeters of each other. Because right now, we're talking about somebody coughs on somebody, or somebody shoots somebody, and we're dead. We are at spiritual and environmental Armageddon, so we need to get it together. And those who are not ready for this task, this is not, um, president of student council. This is a higher level task. It's a spiritual thing. It's a psychological thing. You've got to come up to the plate. You can't just sit there like Bump Sonalog. Get, do research, talk to experts, talk to Patrick Keenan Devlin, talk to Mayor Biss. People in the know, and if you don't know, ask, but, and finger pointing, we can't do that. We need to offer our hearts, our hands, have them paint, you know, you know, sides of, um. Billboards, uh, have them show kids how to play basketball. Get an all hands on deck approach, because we're not done with this pandemic. And if we don't address mental health, jobs. Other things, people need to be busy, and they need to also be heard. So that's my statement.
Thank you. The next speaker is Noah Polish, followed by Tina Payton, and then Priscilla Giles.
Uh, hello, my name is Noah Polish. Um, I live in the Seventh Ward, and I'm a senior at ECHS. On Friday, my brother David and I walked into EHS to collect the belongings we'd need to do e-learning. We didn't really have time to get them on Thursday because we left in a bit of a panic. We checked in with the safety officer at the door and were ushered to the back of a long line of students also waiting to pick up belongings. We soon realized that we were each waiting for individual safety officers to escort us around the building. It took about thirty minutes for most kids to get an escort. This was definitely not the norm. It was nerve wracking. While we stood patiently in line with about twenty other students, a police officer sauntered up to the building with snacks. Evidently for the other officers inside and walked right past us into the school. All of us stiffened. I pondered this for a moment. Why was a police officer, an official supposedly there to make the public feel comfortable in a time of great fear? Creating angst among teenagers? Why were they getting special treatment in our school while we were left feeling overwhelmed and frightened? Counsel, it's easy to act quickly on fear. I hear that parents on Facebook have lots of ideas about how the city and school board should keep EHS safe. This sort of reactive action gets us nowhere. I urge you to address root causes. Listen to the voices of Black and Brown youth as you work to keep all of us safe. Let's not let hysteria dictate public policy. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tina Payton, who will be followed by Priscilla Giles. Is Ms. Payton there in the Zoom? Ms. Payton? If not, the next speaker will be Priscilla Giles.
I believe she was on the phone. I don't know. Um, but in. Okay. In about the year two thousand, a group of citizens in the Fifth Ward formed to, um, to eradicate drugs. And the crime that goes along with it. When the group came to the attention of the city, another group was appointed to dismantle the original Fifth, uh, Ward group named the Foster Park Neighbors. And ended in the ouster of some of the same people pleading for help. And the violence goes on with gun buyback.
I think you muted yourself by, by mistake, Ms. Giles.
We need jobs and job training. We need, uh, affordable after-school programs for, from kindergarten through high school. For academic and violence prevention help. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, everyone who signed up has been called on. The three people who, um, have not yet spoken are Brian Wires. Lonnie Wilson and Tina Payton. Are any of you in the Zoom? Brian Wires, Lonnie Wilson, and Tina Payton?
They may be on the phone.
Right, if any of you are there, whether you're on, whatever tool, whatever technology you're utilizing, uh, unmute yourself and speak up. We'd, we'd love to hear from you. Again, the three are, um, Brian Wires, Lonnie Wilson, and Tina Payton. Okay, uh, hearing none, uh, that concludes, uh, public comment this evening. Mayor, I believe Ms., I believe Ms. Payton's on the line. Oh, great.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Clerk. Um, we have a big problem here in Evanston, and it's called the big cover-up. Must be something like Donald Trump's situation here at the White House, the big cover-up. We will never resolve any problems by keep covering up what's happening here. It wasn't just starting at the high school, wasn't just starting at Green Bay and Foster. I heard on the TV, someone say. That they interviewed people in Evanston, and Green Bay is the main thoroughfare into Evanston. And things like this don't happen in Evanston. When just a month and a half earlier, there was a homicide a block and a half away. So. This is going on and on. We've had many shootings and homicides. Throughout the city, especially in the Fifth Ward. So we need to stop showboating. That means. That we need to stop going around saying how fabulous Evanston is, including the aw- award tonight. That's fine that you got, uh, uh, an award. But stop shouting out that Evanston is number one and concentrating on how many awards we can get. Instead of trying to find out how we can help the youth here. And their parents. Because after renting out apartments of affordable housing for over fifty years here. Some of these children don't have, uh, any help because their parents need help too. So stop showboating and ribbon cutting and hand waving and hand clapping. Get down to business and help those people that need help. I am one of those people who have been providing affordable housing for all of this time and can't get any help. To try to help the homeless. Because you all want to make an appearance that Evanston is number one. Because you want to make a presentation in front of Northwestern's parents. So they will continue to put many, many, many dollars into Northwestern's pocket. So you do not want to have an appearance that there's a problem here in Evanston. So you need to stop the showboating. And get busy with hearing the community and what we need. And not just two or three minutes at public comment. There should be a meeting where you could just hear, just like this young lady that just spoke. Let's hear the youth. Let's hear what they're afraid of. Let's hear what their mental problems are. Let's hear what they need. You're not letting us speak, and you're not letting us be heard because you want to make a presentation about being number one. That starts off at the city council and the mayor. Because you are the ones who are representing us. So you need to represent us and not your own interests. Black Lives Matter all the time, not some of the time, and should not just be a saw, a sign on people's lawn. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. That concludes this evening's public comment. That brings us to Special Orders of Business. Um, first, uh. Sorry, what's that? So we begin with S P one. Would someone like to make a motion on S P one?
I move item S P one. Move item S P one, Jesus Christ, too many pages here. Trying to get the exact title of it. Somebody beats me to it, you beat me to it. All right, moving item S P one. Purchase of insurance renewals, property, excess liability, and excess workers' compensation for the fiscal year 2022.
Councilmember Reed moves item S P one, is there a second?
Second.
Is that Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
All right, so Councilmember Reed moves item S P one, Councilmember Fleming, seconds. Is there a discussion? We begin with Councilmember Newsma.
I will be recusing myself from this discussion and vote since my wife is employed by one of the clerks.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
I just. I'm curious, so this has to be passed at this meeting, I believe?
Mr. Stoneback, do you want to explain the situation here?
Yes, these insurance policies start in January first, and this is our last meeting to try to get these passed in time to have insurance coverage going into the next year.
Thank you for that. My question, I just, and I don't want to belabor this because we got a big important meeting, but this is a special meeting, and so this wouldn't have been our last meeting. So I'm just concerned if this is something that has to happen for January first, why is this, how did this, what happened that this is just coming up now?
I'm going to let Hattash decide. Our chief financial officer responded to that question.
Thank you, Dave, good morning, or good evening, rather, Mayor and the members of the city council. Councilmember Reed, yes, you're right, generally, I mean, even the last time, we had passed it through the what we call the regular city council meeting, the only city council meeting in December. But there was some confusion, obviously, we got the courts. Kind of, it was a tight timeline. The market is so kind of a, what do you call it, tight, particularly in the Chicago area and the Cook County. So we were trying to get the best deal. Some of those responses came late. Obviously, that saved us a substantial amount from the brokers, and that's why this item was a little delayed.
And then my last question is just, what would happen if we hadn't passed this?
I mean, we would just inform the city council because obviously I would like to have an insurance in place as of one one because the current insurance policy has expired as of December thirty first. And then we would come to you and let you know in the first meeting in January.
Okay.
For the formal election, yeah.
Thank you. Just want to remind all councilmembers, just to make this remote meeting work properly, I'm gonna, when we get to S P two, which is the meat of our evening, I'm gonna ask that everyone use the raise your hand function to be recognized. And then once you've been recognized, I don't think I have the ability to lower your hand, so lower your own hand. So I'm, I don't call on you twice for the same, for the same instance. Is there any further discussion on item S P one? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite? Councilmember Winn?
So I think we.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
And then I think Newsma as well.
And Councilmember Newsma.
Abstain.
Got it, on the vote of seven voting in favor and one, sorry, six voting in favor, one abstaining, none voting no, item S P one passes. This brings us to item of S P two. There's a small error in the agenda that I want to apologize for against this technical and not important, but it says suspension of city council rule sixteen point three is required. That should read eleven point eighteen. And so if someone would be willing to make a motion that we suspend rule eleven point eighteen to allow this discussion, I would appreciate it.
I move suspension of rule eleven point eighteen for discussion and hopefully action as well on item S P two.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves suspension of rule eleven point eighteen, Councilmember Newsma, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Revel?
I'm sorry, our legal department wants to weigh in. Mrs. Zarebo?
Thank you, Mayor Biss, members of the city council and city clerk. Mayor Biss, just as a matter of, for the record, is it possible we could suspend rule eighteen point eleven? Thank you, so eleven point eighteen?
I apologize, yep. I apologize. My God, I don't know if anyone wants to remake the motion.
Yeah, I'll remake the motion, and that should have been one that I would catch because eighteen point eleven is one of my favorites. I'll move suspension of rule eighteen point eleven for item S P two.
And I will again second.
Councilmember Reed moves suspension of rule eighteen point eleven, Councilmember Newsma, seconds. Seeing no discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember? Braithwaite is not on, right, sorry?
Yes.
Oh, yes, okay. Councilmember Braithwaite? You're on mute. Councilmember Braithwaite, do you want to raise your hand if that's an aye? Or thumbs up? So I will move on for now. Councilmember Winn?
Present.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the rules are suspended. Before I call on anyone for discussion, would someone like to make a motion just to facilitate a discussion on item S P two?
I move item S P two.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, so now we're ready for a discussion on the main event. And again, I'll ask councilmembers to raise their hand to speak, beginning with Councilmember Reed.
Yes, certainly, Councilmember Burns is the person who reached out to me regarding calling this meeting. So certainly defer to him, but I just want to start off by just saying how fortunate we are. You know, this is, was a really great public comment. Maybe one of the more powerful that I've listened to in my, in my time on the council and with this body. So I really appreciate, we're fortunate to have, you know, historians, if you will, like Alderman Holmes. Very thankful that Ms. Polish, you know, our young folks came out and gave their testimony as well as, you know, many others, the Moran Center. And so I'm really looking forward to having this discussion and supporting the efforts here. I'm really looking forward to hearing from Audrey and the team, reading the memo. I think we need to, this is a critical step. But this is just the baseline, so I'm hoping we can move forward with this with the combination of ARCA funds and a commitment from our general fund as well. I don't know if we're gonna have a presentation, I presume we are, and so I certainly want to leave room for that and then reserve comments for after the presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember. So let's begin then. Mr. Stoneback, I gather there is a presentation from staff?
Yes, I would like to, I believe, turn it over to Mr. Varner.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, clerk, staff, and community members on tonight's meeting. No presentation tonight from the police department, I just want to briefly introduce myself. I took over the detective bureau in September of this year. Included with that are twelve detectives who are certified juvenile officers. They handle both criminal and non criminal matters involving juveniles. Investigations have a variety of outcomes, and the officers have wide discretion on how to handle cases. In addition to, you know, traditional law enforcement where we're referring delinquent juveniles to court or writing tickets or performing station adjustments, we also make a fair amount of referrals to social service agencies or other institutions in town. So I'm very, I'm really looking forward to hear the presentation on S P two. I am joined tonight also by my deputy chief Jody Wright and our community policing sergeant Chelsea Brown. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then we have Audrey Thompson with a presentation as well, sir.
All right, good evening, everyone. Honorable Mayor Biss, councilmembers, specifically councilmembers Burns, Braithwaite, and Reed, thank you so much for calling this special city council meeting. While I am excited to discuss some of the strategies that the team has put together, I'm still saddened by why we even have to be here in the first place. And so I really need to say to the victims and the survivors and their families that we really owe our condolences, but we also owe our action to you. And so it's very important that I share information tonight that will ensure that the community really understands the response of the youth and young adult division. And so with that said, I do want to second all of the public comments that this is a holistic approach. And first, we need to start off by introducing our team so that you all can put faces with names of the individuals who are called to serve you as our community. So first, Audrey Thompson, I'm the community services manager for the city of Evanston. I'm gonna turn it over briefly to Jeremy McCray, who has recently been promoted to outreach team supervisor. And he'll tell you a little bit about the team. We're gonna, he's gotta introduce everyone so everybody can keep their mask on. So I'll put mine back on while he talks, and then we'll, then I'll go back so that you can understand.
Thank you, guys. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, we appreciate you guys' time today. Like Audrey said, our condolences, our condolences to the family, and we'll definitely lead with action. I do want to start off by saying, my name is Jeremy McCray. Audrey just stated I've recently been promoted. Definitely blessings. And the first individual that I want to introduce is Stacy Marani. Been with the city for eight years now, kind of like our senior outreach worker who's been here in the tenured longest. We appreciate Stacy's efforts. Stacy is a huge part in our division. He's on the ground, he's making sure that we're in check, he's making sure that things are all right, and he's making sure that we're able to produce. Next is Lakeisha Barton. Lakeisha Barton has been here for seven years now. Great outreach worker, has been assisting with housing. She's also been very intimate and helped program some of our Safe Summer initiatives. That's turned out really good, so definitely, Lakeisha, thank you for that. And then next is Gennaro Hernandez. Gennaro has been with us for about three years now, has been a great piece for us. He was added to kind of help out our Latino ex population and kind of tap into that population. He's been doing an amazing job with that. Gennaro kind of leads our group at the high school, where we have a hub at, at the high school, where we're kind of interacting with kids on a daily basis. He's in charge over there, so he's been doing an amazing job. We're on the ground at the high school, trying to figure out how we can help in any ways. So thank you, Gennaro, for that. Next is Yezari Gutierrez. She's been with us for about two years. She's been amazing, just helping us out with that stuff, also hitting the ground running with, as far as helping Gennaro with Latino, the Latino population. So yes, thank you for that, I appreciate the efforts. And then lastly, we have James Bowen, who is our youth advocate, which you guys are learning a little bit more about what James does in our slide. But James has been instrumental of trying to help the youth get engagement plans, figuring out how we can help the youth on a smaller surface and figure out how we can help push through whatever we need to push through with individuals. So James has very been, he's been very instrumental in that, and we appreciate that, James. And I just thank you guys for having us, and we appreciate it.
So if you all indulge me for a few minutes, I really want to lay out services that are currently provided and also loop in some of the services or some of the elements of our plan. So first, I'd like to say that our strategies that we're gonna discuss tonight are only the beginning, as many of you all have stated tonight. And it can only be accomplished with this and that strategies and not this or that. So I want to first start by saying I do not think that this plan is the only strategy. I just feel that it is the start and the beginning to a really concrete and specific plan about how we're going to address violence in our community. All right, so I want to start first by giving you all some historical data. So it's gonna be important that we talk about, if you look at our strategic operation plan on the city's website, it references data from two thousand twelve. And I want to just go back a little bit and talk about the total Evanston individuals who have been arrested in the city of Evanston since two thousand seventeen. You'll notice that there has been a decline from two thousand seventeen, a heightened time in two thousand nineteen with two hundred and sixty-three youth and young adults arrested, and now to a hundred and forty-six. Okay, so there's been a decline in youth overall who have been arrested in the city of Evanston. And I will, when I get to talking about restorative practices, I'll give you a little bit more data as to why we believe that that decline has occurred. So of course, we have to talk and start at statistics related specifically to gun-related deaths in Evanston. And so both of our, if you look at the shootings in two thousand sixteen, there were thirteen shootings, and there was one individual who lost his life. And then when you go all the way to twenty twenty-one, you see there have been nine individuals shot, and then four of whom have lost their lives, young people. We also wanted to do a comparison by occurrence because while there were thirteen shootings in two thousand sixteen, the occurrences were nine. And if you look at the occurrences for two thousand twenty-one, there have been nine individuals shot, youth and young adults, and those occurrences are three. So there are some assessments that can be made related to shootings and occurrences. And one of those is that the types of guns that are being used are a lot more deadly. So I'll start with that by saying it's gonna take a federal, state, and local approach to annihilate gun violence, which is a national public health crisis. And so this plan again is only one strategy. So let's look at specifically the data that is related to our youth and young adult division. So let's look at specifically the data that is related to our Youth and Young Adult Division. So this year alone, our Youth and Young Adult Division has provided an intake to 306 new clients. So you'll get to see some of the information as to how many individuals we helped with employment assistance, which is 81, 14 referrals for substance use, and then 77 housing and rent assistance applications completed for our clients. So who are our clients? So those 306 new clients are all high-risk. So what we mean by high-risk is that they are experiencing two of any of the following risk factors. So whenever we're doing our assessment, if an individual has at least two, then we consider them high-risk. So I'm glad that Resident Ray Friedman talked about data, because I want to really talk about the ages of the individuals from this slide, which is what has caused us, in addition to the research from the World Health Organization, it really says that we've got to expand our age. So right now, our division, when you're looking at our numbers, we traditionally looked at individuals 14 to 24. And I'm asking that we move that number, not only that we move it from middle school to 29, but anyone, if we have a direct client, 11 to 29, those individuals and anyone in their home will be able to benefit from any programs and services offered by our division. So a part of those numbers are, from the 306, are our Certificate of Rehab clients. So this is initiative, this is an initiative that we're, that's offered in partnership with the Moran Center for Youth Advocacy. And this program specifically works with individuals to clear their criminal backgrounds or their criminal records, in addition to other programs and services provided by the Moran Center. So you see 84 new and continuing or returning clients, 84 just in 2021. So then again, when we're talking about community referrals, there are three ways that individuals, youth, normally come to our division. The first is through community referrals. So you see here all the ways in which our division receives referrals. And that's simply through the community. It could be word of mouth, it could be a young person sending a text message to an outreach team member. It could be a parent saying, I'm having a really rough time here. It could be a young person that's referring another young person. So there are several ways that we get our referrals, including District 65 and 202 staff, which we meet with several times a month regarding wraparound services for youth and families. So that's one way. The second way is through the juvenile administrative hearings process. So Commander Gardner talked about complaint tickets. So in November of 2020, our division became responsible for the juvenile or the restorative justice program related specifically to complaint tickets. Since November, we have received 40 complaint tickets. 29 of those have completed their engagement plans. And if you'll notice, I'm not going to go over all of the data, but there were zero complaint tickets written in June, July, or August while our Safe Summer Initiative was being implemented in the city. 13 of those 40 referrals for restorative justice have become actual youth and young adult clients. And overall, our division has completed 39 circles with community related specifically to repairing harm caused by the individual either receiving the seat ticket or someone who is a part of our client, a part of our clients. So what's really noteworthy, and Jeremy talked about James Bowen, and James Bowen, our Youth and Family Advocate, is the one who administers the program, along with a lot of collaboration with the collective, but specifically the Moran Center. What's noted is there is a 90% success rate of individuals who have received a complaint ticket from the Evanston Police Department completing their community engagement plans. In addition to that, there is only one of the 40 complaint tickets written, only one of those youth have returned and received a second seat ticket. So we can see that programs like this are at the heart of what we need in order to repair harm in our community, as well as make sure that those who are affected by violence and also those who are involved in violence are someone that we can reach out to specifically. So then there is, the third way that we receive our referrals is through the Evanston Police Department. So community referrals, lots of ways. Administrative hearings process, and then the Evanston Police Department sends to our division counseling referrals. James Bowen, our Youth and Family Advocate, also receives those. This year, we have received 41 referrals from the Evanston Police Department, 26 youth who are currently receiving some type of treatment. And you can see all of the social service organizations that we refer individuals, if not based solely on some of the services and programs that we also provide. If you'll notice, 13 of these young people have also become clients of our outreach team. So a pretty robust referral from individuals, and again, these are individuals that are specifically participating in violence. If you would look at the counseling referrals, 33 of the 41 of those referrals, 33 of those are violence-related referrals. So that's either through the parents or the schools, but those referred to us, 33 of Okay, so Yazari is completing that. So initially, our Safe Summer Initiative was, our Safe Summer Initiative was created because there were, there was a shooting on Hovland. And I have to admit that after that shooting, we dropped the ball. We went into the community, we met with the residents on Hovland, we met with survivors, we met with victims, families, communities, and we really recognized that we dropped the ball. So after all of the meetings, we got together and we formed, as Kristen Canard stated earlier from the Moran Center, we created this crisis response team. And in that, we went to the communities and they told us, hey, you didn't come to check on us when the shooting happened on our block. You didn't say what type of mental health services we were eligible to receive, or someone would just reach out and say, are you okay? So that's why our community, our crisis response team was created. And so we continued those meetings with the crisis response team and the collective, along with other high-risk youth. And it really revealed the need for an initiative that was involving youth, their families, and community. And what we said is, we've got to do something over the summer, or this will not, this will be a summer where more lives are lost. And so we did that. Oh, I think you missed one slide. So the next one is supposed to be blocks. Yeah, there we go. All right. So the first part of our initiative was to go into blocks. If you notice some of the public comments before, Alderman Home specifically talked about praying on the corners. So we said, let's go into the blocks. And we started with Hovland, because they said, we need to bring this block together, because it is, there is a stigma for this block specifically. So we started with Hovland. And we had a wonderful event that led to the creation of their block party, their block party and their block club. And they are still meeting to this day regarding issues in the neighborhood. But I will say what was striking, and this came out in Alderman Home's response on the fifth ward meeting, about block parties, and Mummy Parsons from, you know, YMCA said, what's going on? You know, we used to have block parties and clubs that cared about their specific neighborhood. So the problem is, of the six that I'm noting as block clubs, there were really only two block clubs, and that's the West End Area Block Club and also the Hovland, who was just created. So a part of our plan is to work with residents and help them to initiate block clubs in their neighborhoods. So that's a part of the plan. So then the second part of the initiative was our First Friday Events. And from our First Friday Events, we had four events, and this was really an ability to pull together the youth who are frequenting, what we'll talk about on the next slide, the community centers, and have them come into a space where it could be more of a family event. Many times when we're working with youth, you know, it's a really good idea to involve their families. So a part of this was to bring them out into a safe place where they could have fun and be a part of something that was bigger than, you know, the block club. But everybody's invited from the community to come out and just be together and share. So here is our community, our summer community drop-in center. So you see, we averaged 50 youth nightly at Fleetwood Jordan, but 100 youth nightly at Robert Crown. So I know people are saying, well, why are we, what's going on with Robert Crown? During, during our pop-up pantry, I was doing deliveries with one of our high-risk youth, and we passed by Robert Crown, and he said, I said, have you been into the new Robert Crown? And he said, you know, we're not allowed in there. And I said, what do you mean, you're not allowed to go to Robert Crown? He said, you know, people that look like me and you are not allowed in Robert Crown. The same day, I contacted Lawrence Hemingway, and I said, you got to give me Robert Crown for our Safe Summer Initiative. The young people have to be able to come for free to Robert Crown and participate in all of the activities. And that's what we did. It was only supposed to be one night, but after we saw how many young people came, even from the fifth ward, to Robert Crown, I said, I got to have a second night. And he obliged, along with all of his, you know, wonderful staff who were at Robert Crown. And at that time, the new director or the new manager at Robert Crown was there on an interim basis, and it really just worked out. So we averaged that, and people were, oh, why are you going to Robert Crown? Because that's where the young people stated they wanted to be. They were fine with going and hanging out at Fleetwood, but they said they felt like they were grown when they went to Robert Crown. And that's why we made sure that Robert Crown was a part of that. Notice there are just some statistics, 494 students registered altogether, and I'll tell you that, that these are youth who are specifically involved in violence, specifically. So I want to bring attention to the picture on the right-hand side. So Councilmember Braithwaite, you and members from Evanston on it, came and helped us with a spill-and-paint violence prevention workshop. And we only targeted youth who were specifically involved in violence. And if you look at the pictures, everyone that you're seeing are individuals who lost their lives doing gun violence. So we were able to have a conversation with those young people while they painted, in a healing environment, that said, what do we have to do? What does this community have to do so that you do not become a victim, just like some of the, like the people that you see or the people that you are painting? So those were activities that happened specifically at the community center. I also want to highlight workforce development, and up until now, our major workforce development has always been the Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program. As you know, in 2020, we had to pivot. We were on target to have the largest job fair, but of course, we had to cancel. But we still provided virtual opportunities for individuals, so you'll see much of our stats, and also those numbers broken down into work. In addition, I will say, thanks to our then-program supervisor, Nathan Norman, we were really able to do some creative things over the last year. And a part of that was our Leadership Youth Institute, and that was a camp that was facilitated in partnership with the YWCA. Also, our Kingia Nonviolence and Restorative Justice Camp took place over the summer, and that was facilitating a collaboration with the Moran Center. And please know that all of the individuals that work with our outreach team have specific training in restorative practices and circles. And all of them just went through a second intensive in October, where they were trained by Elizabeth Bastine, who is an adjunct professor for DePaul, but also works at Dominican University in their college. So we're also talking about individuals who are trained to implement the programs and services that we are discussing tonight. In addition, and thanks to the leadership of Nathan Norman, our Career Pathways Program, we changed it up a little bit and offered it in partnership with the U-Job Center and created what we call iKid Careers. And that's with U-Job Center and the Mayor's Employer Advisory Council, better known as MEAT. And just this year, in 2021, you'll see 13 total positions, seven who are currently employed. And these are young people who have already graduated from ETHS. So again, thanks to Nathan Norman and his leadership for thinking outside the box as to how we can provide, you know, workforce development opportunities for young people even in a pandemic. All right, so a couple of programs that enhance outreach. So what you're looking at is a pop-up pantry, which was facilitated by our Youth and Young Adult Division. And this was on the backside of Family Focus, where individuals could just drive up and receive food on Saturdays. So you'll see that 40 individuals, and we're talking about case management, wraparound services. In this pop-up pantry, we were able to contact each of the families, and we've had clients that have come out of the pop-up pantries. We've done over 40 SNAP applications, just trying to make sure that people are able to go and choose their own food, rather than having to pick up food from a pantry, unless their own food rather than having to pick up food from a pantry, unless that's just what they choose to do. But giving them choice and dignity to be able to not choose the things that we have placed in boxes and bags, but to offer them programs where they can go and shop for their own food. So what's so wonderful about the pop-up pantry is that we were able to hire what we call at-risk youth to participate. And as many of you know, we are really major partners with Evanston Onit. And Evanston Onit provided us funding this year in order to be able to hire at-risk youth. So when I talked about on the fifth ward meeting several weeks ago, that we need opportunities that are right now, Evanston Onit provided funding that allowed me to hire individuals right now. So when staff came and said, hey, I, I need to provide an opportunity, we were able to do that with those funds, with those funds. And if you look at the plan, this allows us not only to provide opportunities for those at-risk youth, but anyone who is a part of their household. And then finally, here are other programs that enhance our outreach. And so when you ask, how do outreach, how do the outreach team receive clients? How do they receive information on violence that's occurring or violence that has occurred? They form relationships with the young people. And you would be surprised at the information that young people share. And that could be through text messages, it can be through videos sent directly to the outreach team. All of them have cell phones and the young people have an opportunity to reach out to them whenever they need to. And they are sending information directly that allows us to talk to both of those parties in order to extinguish incidents of violence. Now, while I want to highlight that the Safe Summer Initiative, there were no seat tickets, there was no gun violence during the initiative. Our initiative was not without violence. We did have some occurrences at our community centers. But as Councilmember, then Alderman, we call Alderman for, for Alderman Homes, and she talked about throwing the baby out with the bathwater. We didn't just say the program, you know, we've got fights going on with young people. We've got to do away with the program. We brought them in. We brought their parents in. We went to their parents. We went to their homes. We provided restorative circles. One even ending with the young people who were involved addressing those who frequent the community centers in an effort to say, we messed up. We want to repair the harm. You know, when we do, when we do what we did the other night, this causes an issue. We don't want to lose this program. It's a wonderful program. And they addressed the other young people who were there. And that's what this is about. It's not about saying that we have to have perfect young people. It's about how do we repair harm and how do we bring the entire community? And so why this approach matters, it's because we need a holistic approach. And that includes the city of Evanston. It includes our community members, which includes youth and their families. It includes community partners. It includes the entire community. So I leave you with that and I will entertain any questions that you have.
Thank you so much for that, that presentation. Really, really, really appreciate it. So now I want to see if there's any discussion from the council. We'll begin with Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a, a quick question for Ms. Thompson. Audrey, you receive quite a few referrals, but not all of those referrals become clients. So can you, you know, kind of describe the process by which somebody converts from a referral to a client? Do they have to make an affirmative, you know, kind of action to become a client? Or how does that work?
Sure. Great question. Thanks, Councilmember. So if you're referring to the counseling slide, is that the one you're referring to?
There was one slide where you had some four hundred, four hundred-plus referrals, or I forget what the numbers were. But there was quite a few referrals and then, you know, somewhat smaller number of clients came out of that.
So it just depends on if that, if that individual is high-risk. So just because we are providing them resources, unless they state or we can engage them, know that they have two risks, we don't consider those clients, they're contacts. So then, once we are actively working with them, and what's new to our division just in the last year is that we have recrafted Apricot, which is our documentation system. Deanna Haller, who is not here with us tonight, was able to create a way for us to place goals and objectives and then to run reports based on those clients who are achieving. So unless they have goals and objectives that we are working toward, we don't consider them clients. So if you call and you just say, hey, can you tell me where I can go for this? We don't consider those individuals clients. We have to be working on a goal and objective to meet those goals.
And this is something that the individual would have to opt into.
And even with our restorative practice coming from our administrative hearing process, the parents still have to opt. So they have to agree because they can pay a fine. But we rarely have parents who will pay the fine. So, and, and I really want to give a lot of credit to the Alternatives to Arrest Committee, as well as the Moran Center for working in order. And, and so when we talk about the reduction of arrest, I really credit the work that they did in order to reduce the amount of arrest and provide alternatives to those arrests. And we see that it's working. We've only had one youth in the last year who's come back for a second seat ticket. So I, I consider that success.
Thank you. Thank you. Other council members? Next is Councilmember Burns, followed by Kelly.
Hey, Audrey, thank you so much for the, the presentation. Would, would you mind quickly going over the recommendations outlined in the memo for community members who may not have had a chance to take a look at that yet?
All right. So, so I want to go back to our strategic plan, which is not new to the Youth and Young Adult Division. So we identified four areas as our keys to success in violence reduction. And that's education, alternative recreation, workforce development, and civic engagement. So I've broken each one of those down into more of the expanded program. And, and let me make sure that I, I, because I want to be clear that while my city, your city, our city started off as a Safe Summer Initiative, because of the success of the program and the young people that were actually coming to the program, we recognized we needed free and safe spaces for young people to come and a, in a way for us to also engage with their, their parents. So, so the, the first part is that, so we haven't really increased our outreach. We have some seasonal employees, but actual employees that are, you know, on, that are actually a part of our team with benefits and, you know, they're here permanently. We only have four, plus the supervisor. And so this position that I'm asking for really allows us to, to hire one additional full-time outreach team member. And this is someone who is going to help to execute the entire initiative. So just more boots on the ground, as to speak. And then to break things down into education, we saw the success of the Kingia Nonviolence camps that we did over the summer, and we want to expand that and target young people who we have already identified as those who are participating in violence. And I, and, and when you all talk about flexibility, I want to be able to even say that that camp cannot take place in Evanston. Because we have young people who come to us and say, I need a job, but I can't go to Valley. I need a job that's outside of Evanston because I'm fearful of going to work every day in Evanston. So when we talk about flexibility, I need to be able to have flexibility of these funds because this is simply a budget. And I need to be able to move things around and offer programs and services based on as things develop. So another part of that is, you see, we've, we've expanded the, the age, the target age. And we need more of a targeted approach to middle school. So now, while we're still doing some life skills, you know, camps, and I mean, we're doing those every week at two middle schools, we need to expand that so that we're in all of the middle schools. We are constantly being asked to attend wraparound meetings with District 65 and District 202 staff about clients. And sometimes they don't even have a release of information. And they'll just say, can we get on a call and talk about what's happening? And you all can help us figure out what to do until we're able to get a release of information and refer the young person directly to you. So that's more of, you know, working to get more into the middle schools. And then also, we need to be able to support clients who are in their journey of a career path and are maybe not able to begin or end. So what I mean by that is when we look at, we had a wonderful event over the summer where young people could come and get a free haircut. But in addition to that, we had Legacy Barber College to come and talk to individuals about a career path in barber and cosmetology. But we had young people there who said, I've started at the Barber College, but I can't end because as soon as I graduate, the funding stops from ETHS. We know that if you don't catch them in that time period between the cutoff of funds, there, you got a problem. So we need to be able to say, if you complete, then we will provide the funding for the rest of the Barber College. Same thing. I was on a call last week with North Shore Health Systems. We're working really intimately with them. And they said they have a CNA program that is four weeks and costs nine hundred dollars. So I asked, well, if the city was able to, to pay that when an individual completes that, would you all be available to pay half of it back to the city in order to move the process along? So there are a lot of things that we can do to support not only youth, but their families. We want to be able to get a fourteen-year-old a job during the summer. But what does that do if their parent is not employed? So then you have several of those outreach, you know, several of those outreach, you know, when we talked about at-risk clients, you have several of those, not just two. So we want to be able to pay if that is an issue. And we see it all the time. I just want to be able to pay for it. So that's education. Then civic engagement. So we have started applications for the Youth Advisory Committee. And currently, we have twelve applicants. When we come back from, at the beginning of the year, this will go out to the community because those twelve applicants were referred specifically by social service organizations. Because we wanted young people who have a story. You know, I mean, we're happy to have, you know, a valedictorian, but we also want individuals who are specifically involved or have been involved in violence or really have a lot of those at-risk characteristics. We want to be able to have them on our Youth Advisory Committee. And they will be the ones that will inform a lot of policies and practices, not only of our division, but for the city. Wouldn't it be nice for them to be doing this presentation rather than me? Absolutely. So a part of civic engagement is getting them involved. And as one individual talked about, her son, from the public comment, her son, who is an at-risk youth, is currently employed by the city of Evanston. And he is working, you know, as we would consider a junior outreach team member. But we'd like to have more young people who we consider at-risk opportunity youth. And that, again, is just something that Evanston Onit started. We just want to be able to finish it. And then, so you'll see also stipends for parents. So these are parents who have really been either clients or individuals who have been affected by violence. We want them to be trained in a curriculum called Parenting for Nonviolence. So they can take that curriculum, but I don't want them to volunteer. I want to be able to pay them in order to do those, those parenting classes. And then workforce development, again, I talk about the right now opportunities. So I need to be able to provide opportunities when someone says, I need a job right now. So we need to create here at the city, a second chance policy. And I reached out to Megan Falara, who is our interim HR manager. She's already put in a legal request to start that process. So we can see, because even, you know, whatever happens tonight doesn't mean we don't need to still do a second chance policy. We need that. We also need to be able to go to city, the city, 2100 Ridge, and talk to each department and really work with them on those positions that we can hire for these right now positions. Do you recognize that if we have a family member who works at the city of Evanston and can be a part of the union, that they, along with anyone in their home, can go and get an associate's degree or a bachelor's degree for free? So while I understand we have to have external opportunities, the city of Evanston has to lead by example. And if I'm going to go to employers and say, will you give a young person and/or their family member an opportunity? I can't ask them to provide opportunities that the city is not willing to provide. And so that's why we are engaging with the Human Resources Manager and Legal to see what we can do in order to look at job descriptions and reduce barriers for employment for our clients. I need to be able to get our clients a job here, too. So the seventy-five thousand, and again, this is only a budget, allows us to, while an individual is going through on-the-job training, and we are just estimating fifty people in a year, that we'll be able to provide right now opportunities. So in that two hundred and forty thousand, we are able to say, we will pay for the first eight weeks of training while this person has services wrapped around them by our organization and other organizations, as well as, and that's for eight weeks. But we also want to make sure that we are providing job readiness training. We're finding people who haven't worked in years. And so some job readiness trainings to carry them through that eight weeks would be necessary. So that's why we have the whole job readiness, also career pathways. That's why that's all a part of the workforce development piece. And then finally, there's alternative recreation. You see money in order to help individuals create their own block club, but also to help them execute their first block party. And so, you know, that's going to take some of our staff time. But we're also wanting to reach out to those block clubs that are already formed and say, are you willing to help another community, another neighborhood, get their block club up and running? And then our drop-in center. And then, um, our drop-in center, um, right now, the plan is to, um, open up a drop-in center directly across the street from Evanston Township High School in Gibbs Morrison and be open from the time young people get out of school until eight-thirty at night. And allow them to have opportunities to talk about career paths, but also just provide them a safe space. And what we've been told by them is to allow them a place to be, allow them a place to resolve their conflicts with our assistance, but also a free space. So that will be directly across, um, and you know, there's a kitchen area. How wonderful would it be for us to open up a cafe in that area and allow the youth to run the cafe at the youth center? So those are workforce development opportunities that are at our fingertips if we just execute them. So let's look at, you know, again, let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. Let's figure out how we can incorporate plans that are this and that, rather than this or that. And then finally, just providing subrecipient agreements to organizations who are in this, this advocacy and this fight with us that say, if you come in and you'll do healthy eating on a budget in the space for four weeks, we are able to contract with them in order to provide those services in the space at Gibbs Morrison or at Robert Crown. Was that good enough, Councilmember Burns, that I go through?
Yep, and I'll have other things, but I'll, uh, pass it on to my colleagues and circle back around. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Councilmember Kelly, followed by Revelle, followed by Fleming.
Great, thank you for that interesting presentation. So I just am trying to understand a little bit about the budgeting for this. And, um, when I was looking through the budget, I was trying to find the line item for, I could see what we were, what we had allocated in two thousand and nineteen. Can you tell me what, how much did we have allocated for youth and young adult services for the two thousand and twenty and for the two thousand and twenty-one budget? I just was, I, I don't know if it's called something different, but I didn't, couldn't find it.
So for twenty twenty-two, it's about one point six million dollars. And for the two years before that, it's a little less than that. So we've received just a little bit of additional funding. And that's based on, um, we did not have the restorative justice program initially. And so that is also now under youth and young adults. Um, so that just provides an opportunity for us to engage directly with those receiving the seat tickets. Um, in addition, um, in our budget for twenty twenty-two, we have, um, two contractual positions, um, for, uh, a licensed clinical person to work with us as well. So, um, that would be something that just, um, will overall, um, help with our whole mental health is essential. You know, we have that task force, uh, we work with them, um, also. But, you know, that just kind of helps further their mission and our mission is just making sure that we are trauma-informed and we're, and we're working with that with our clients.
Great, thank you. So, okay, so just so I'm, just what is it? If I were to look for it in the two thousand and twenty budget, what is the line item? What is it called?
Youth Engagement.
It's called you, and it's under which department?
Health and Human Services.
Okay, and that amount for twenty twenty, how much was that, was allocated for twenty twenty?
So under a little bit, one point five, a little bit over one point five million.
Okay, for twenty twenty and the same thing for twenty twenty-one?
A little bit more. It goes, it goes up a little bit every year.
Okay.
It's based on what programs and services we've, we've asked, um, to receive.
Great, okay, thank you. And can you, um, talk to me a little bit about, can you tell us, like, what articulation with the high schools happened in the past couple of years? As a thirty-year veteran teacher there, I'd love to know what efforts have been made to, um, in articulation with our high school.
So we actually have, um, an office in the hub at E T H S. And, um, you know, it's a little, um, it's, it's not, young people aren't hanging out in that space as much anymore. Um, but as soon as, um, we're able to, then we're back in that space. So, um, I mean, we, we literally have an office at E T H S. Um, and then our outreach team is there at let-out, um, a lot of times just to make sure that things go smoothly. We recognize that a lot of, um, you know, a lot of fights happen when, uh, young people are let out of school. But also our interaction specifically with teachers, counselors, social workers, the principal, the superintendent, um, you know, we really work with them specifically. And they send referrals our way based on several things that would happen in, in the high school. So we get ours directly from the high school and even more so now the middle school.
So just, could you give me an example, like at the high school? I just, um, so is there someone sitting in that office every day or I, I'm just not clear on how?
So we, we, we have hours in the hub. That's usually how it works when we're not in a pandemic. Um, so, did you want?
Now I was just gonna say lunchtime is, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was surprised you were talking about that. But, uh, I would say just an example is, uh, at the high school, uh, we're able to schedule, uh, kind of meetings or, uh, the youth know we have it directly inside of the hub. So the way that we kind of, uh, kind of tell the youth, uh, they reach out to us, text messages, walk them through the halls, safety officers refer to say, hey, the outreach team is here. But our main hours are usually probably the high-risk time, which is lunchtime. I think that's the hours that we, those are hours that we really are able to navigate and help out. And with those hours, you got, uh, probably a lot more of the youth that's coming in, kind of eating their lunch, trying to figure out what's going on, trying to figure out if there's employment opportunities, college opportunities, because that's also inside of the hub. So that, that's how we're in, uh, that's how we interact.
And traditionally, I'm sorry, we've shared a space with the Youth Job Center, um, who is, um, who's actually one of our partners when it comes to career pathways and, um, also MEAC. So, uh, MEAC is there, they are even now doing, um, employer, uh, presentations. So, um, we're also a part of that as well. Just working with MEAC to make sure that young people, you know, understand career paths.
Okay, so someone staffed there during lunch hours? Is that what I'm understanding?
Usually doing lunch hours and normally it's, um, Gennaro. And, um, so he's there most times, he's really assigned. But it could be any outreach, um, team member who's there as well.
Yeah, just, I mean, and also depending on the relationship that outreach worker have, uh, uh, with the youth, I think that, that kind of determines whether, who goes to the high school and what, uh, and what we need to talk about. So we, we kind of go based off that. But yeah, Gennaro's in there and then we're, we're, uh, out let-out every day at three-thirty-five. And in front of the high school, also in the back of the high school.
And Councilmember, um, Councilmember Kelly, I want to make sure that you know that for our Safe Summer Initiative, we only really targeted, um, high school. Um, and so the youngest was thirteen. Now, some other folks kind of came in sometimes, but, um, our age was thirteen. And so when you look at the statistics for those four hundred and ninety-four youth that came to the community centers, those are young people that we see at the high school. But there are also young people who came over the summer to our community centers, um, Fleetwood, Jordan, and also Robert Crown. And I, I want to make sure that you all understand, we didn't create the Safe Summer Initiative sitting in a room like this. We literally went to young people and asked them what they wanted. And even the rules, or they don't want to call rules, they wanted to call expectations. All of that was created by the young people who went to the centers. In addition to the young people that we receive the seat tickets from, the ones that are, and these young people are directly involved in, in not only violence, but we also know that they are individuals who, um, who own guns. You know, so, you know, and, and I'll just, and I'll, I'll just have to say that. Like, you know, we, we have been in contact with individuals who, who do own guns.
Okay, thank you so much. And I mean, in terms of, um, you know, violent, like evidence-based violence reduction programs, um, what, what are the main ones that you would focus on in terms of that, in terms of, you know, evidence, like violence reduction programs that are backed with, um, data in terms of, um, success?
Right, so we use data from what many organizations or many, um, entities say will reduce violence. And so a part of that is what you see in my report from the World Health Organization, which is, hey, how are you going to provide, um, training and support for families? The Center for Disease Control also says the same. These are proven strategies that actually, and the biggest part of it is workforce development and also the four, education, those four components that have been a part of our strategic operation plan long before I came, um, to this division. Those are the strategies that we specifically used. And, and I'll tell you that, um, those individuals who have been here for quite some time are also trained in Kinyan Nonviolence. And that is a curriculum that we use specifically to work with young people to reduce violence.
And the Kinyan program's been going on during COVID, correct? Because I know it was happening before COVID. Um, and that's continued during these past two years, the Kinyan program?
Right, in G three hundred with the Moran Center staff and our staff. And they're conducting those workshops right here over the summer. I just, we, we need more than one a year.
Wonderful. And are there, in terms of the workplace, do we, do you all have, like, employers already lined up? Um, for this, you know, for some of these programs, like the Youth and Family Workforce Development Program?
So we already have employers that we work, and that's facilitated a lot by MEAC. But also our employers that are internal and external that we already work with, um, for the Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program. So we have external and internal. But I want to be able to say to them, this is available. So, you know, if it's available, then that's when we will canvas them to say, here's the opportunity. Will you sign an agreement with us to participate in our program? And a part of it, again, Councilmember Kelly, is for us to, to really start at the city. What opportunities are available at the city? And we have many seasonal, but we also have jobs that are open. Um, Stacy Morani is here tonight. And, um, Councilmember Burns and Councilmember Braithwaite came to an event that he hosted last week at the Robert Crown Center. And he had nine, nineteen individuals there, um, to talk about, um, expunging their record. They're, they're, and so from that, why am I not able to say, here are these opportunities for you? And some of them are individuals who have young people who come to Robert Crown every day for our current drop-in center. And Councilmember Braithwaite will tell you of an incident that occurred right at the center with three young men just last week. That if we weren't there navigating and providing some resources for them in their month, now this, these are three young men who come every day to the center. Was there as a part of Stacy's workshop. And so you can see by this presentation, there are all types of avenues by which we work with young people. It's not a one-size-fits-all.
Yeah, thank you. No, I appreciate that. Now, are you also using that, that Apricot database still, what you're using to get intake?
Yes, ma'am, but totally revamped. I would love an opportunity to sit down with you and show you the new product.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, as I know you agree, like accountability, we're all committed to creating an Evanston that, um, better supports our youth at risk. But if we don't have the accountability piece, um, I mean, just, it's so important. So I would love to see that. That would be, that would be great. Um, and I, can you, I was just curious, one thing kind of got my attention when you mentioned families, um, about the opt, about opting out and a fine? Can you, what is the fine that you mentioned that families?
So when young people are written what we call a seat ticket, that's a complaint ticket, um, by the Evanston Police Department, they, um, they are given the ticket and then given a time to appear, which now, um, we're appearing virtually. Um, they appear at the hearing and in that time, they can plead liable and, and go through restorative practices. So they can do that, or they can opt to just pay whatever the fine is that the seat ticket, um, presents. So, um, but we don't, we don't really have individuals who pay the, pay the fine. And, you know, you all will probably get sick of me because eventually I'm coming back. Because true restorative is that you don't have the administrative hearing process upfront. That's, that's the last resort. So a part of it is finding a way that young people can be referred directly to us without even being provided the seat ticket initially. That's true restorative, an effort to allow them to repair the harm upfront. So that's an ordinance change. So just FYI, I will be coming back to talk about that in the future.
Um, and then my last question for the moment, I have a lot of questions. But, um, so all these programs that I've been looking over that seem wonderful, so none of them are happening now within the current budget?
So.
It sounds like a lot of them you mentioned are actually already happening.
They are. So the Safe Summer Initiative, we've already secured funding for that piece, um, which is why the ask is not more. Because we've already secured community development block grant, grant funds that are specific to COVID for this next summer. So all of those three, the block, um, the block clubs, the, the, um, the block parties, the First Fridays, all of that will be returning, um, come summer. And the goal is come this summer, twenty twenty-two. So the goal is for us to have our Youth Advisory Committee, um, to already be, um, in effect. And they will be the ones that will manage this. And so, um, you know, we want youth to be really, um, making the decisions on how we reach them. Because, I mean, I'm forty-five. And certain things that I did at fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty-five are just different now. So we have to have young people who are going to inform those decisions. So a part of the Youth Advisory Committee is, I mean, wouldn't it be great for them to come to Mayor Bis and say, we want to declare the week leading up to when school is out, you know, Violence Prevention Week, and that we have a strategy that includes the middle schools and the high schools that really prepare them while they're in school, leading up to the summer. And that's something that we do every year. So those are things that we're hoping that the Youth Advisory Committee would want to do and will be able to, to come back to council and ask for, um, some discussion and some action.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I would love to see, I don't know if there's a way to do sort of a chart to see what's been covered currently with the one point six million and, you know, what you're unable to cover, what you've been unable to do with that money. Um, it would just be helpful, I think, in terms of, um, just accountability.
So Councilmember Kelly, I'm, I'm willing to, for us to just sit down and I can go through all of those. But recognize that a large part of our, our budget is the Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program. And so looking at that, and we are, um, increasing, um, the hourly wage, wage this year just to be more competitive. So just imagine that a large part of our budget is that program. So I'm happy for us to sit down and you can see why it's important to have additional funding. Because I can't just offer young people a job during the summer. I've got to help them find, you know, career paths that really shape and inform their futures. I've got to help them find, you know, career paths that really shape and inform their futures. And so that, that's going to require some additional funding.
For sure.
Thank you. I just want to name that this is an incredibly important topic, so I'm not inclined to cut people off, but I, I I just, there's just been a lot of lengthy back and forth, and I know that the folks are, are flagging a little bit. So I want to just urge both questions and answers to be as concise as possible to make sure that the folks who raised their hand last have an equal, equal shot. Next will be Councilmember Revell, followed by Fleming.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as you know, I'm always pretty succinct. And, and in fact, I do have to drop off of the call because I have a previous commitment that's starting momentarily. But I did want to just jump in quickly and say, you know, huge thanks to Audrey for this, just really wonderful presentation about such a multifaceted program. It, it covers not only in terms of what we've been doing, gives us a greater appreciation of the many different programs that are currently in place, but then all the new initiatives that are outlined in the memo. It's, it's very encouraging. I'm, I'm particularly pleased to see that we're expanding the target age for, for the programs because it's very clear that we need to go beyond age twenty-four. So I, I think that's a very important addition to the program. It's, it's really great. We have so many community partners that are working hand in hand with the city because you know, this is really, this, this is a huge issue that's going to take all of us working together to really bring to a successful outcome. I wanted, let's hide one more little target here. Oh, and I, I'm really glad to see so many programs that do reach out to involve the families because it, it we really, it, it does need to be wraparound for the, for the young people, but it also needs to be holistic for the, for that whole family. And what we can, whatever we can do to make the community, you know, be able to help families provide economically in a more, and be more financially stable would be to the benefit, obviously, of the family, but, and, and then the young people that we're trying to reach with this program. So I thank you again for outlining such a, you know, wonderful, rich array of programs. And I'm, I'm very encouraged.
Thank you. Councilmember Fleming.
Ah, yeah. Oh, shoot. Sorry, my volume. So the couple comments, so one thing is, I do like that the age has gone up. I guess I'm also concerned about age going down, and maybe that's not something for our city team, but more coordinated effort with sixty-five, because, you know, all the literature talks about violence starting younger and younger. And so, you know, it'll be great if it is only fourteen, but I think, you know, kids who engage in violence at fourteen have been exposed and have other things going on much younger. So I know you guys already work with sixty-five, and we don't need to get into a long conversation about that. But I would love to see some more coordinated efforts around violence prevention for younger kids.
So our, so we do expand the age to twenty-nine, but we lower it to eleven. So that covers the middle school. And so, you know, we want to start at middle school. And, you know, at, at some point, there has to be discussion with even elementary.
But yes, that's what I mean. Yeah.
Right, as far as capacity right now. And, and we are working directly with the counselors and social workers. And there, there are, there's a new position at District sixty-five, which are two social workers that are specifically wraparound social workers. And so they've attended our planning group meetings, and they refer cases specifically to us. But they're also inviting us to wraparound so that we can participate in those as far as young people that we're working with.
Great. So, so that's helpful. Again, I still think we, you know, as a city, if we're talking about not just, obviously, we are the municipality, but as a city as a whole, if this is a citywide problem, just wanting to make sure we don't miss things we could have helped younger kids, even younger than eleven, right? Learn to deal with so that at eleven and fourteen, they're not making the wrong choices. Another thing that I think is not spelled out explicitly that I just want to name is, you know, really focusing on males. As we see, again, nationwide, you know, males as offenders, males as victims, obviously. Young women obviously play a role in both sides as well, but, you know, a lot of the violence, a lot of the statistics are males. And so, you know, just making sure we don't miss that. The, I appreciate the second chance policy. As we were talking, I looked in my email because it's something that I worked on when I first got into council. We, anyway, we, we did make some policy adjustments, not nearly enough, but at that time, the council and administration were not willing to do much more, so hopefully you will get further. Happy to share what we did get to, but again, it was not enough, in my opinion, to really make a difference. It's still left a lot of room for people to opt out of hiring folks. And so it would be great if we can solidify something that says we are actually going to hire people. Right? And don't give, you know, hiring managers an opportunity to use phrases like people are not a good fit for our culture and so on and so forth. So I believe in that wholeheartedly. I think we do have to be an example. We ask as a city, our nonprofits and other partners to do a lot of things that I don't know that we are necessarily doing. So I appreciate that the second chance policy and new workforce program is going to identify that. I've been very concerned about our, not interns, where are they? Anyway, whatever, apprenticeships, right? They don't pay very much. We don't have very many. Yeah, we ask everybody else in the city to hire folks, and we don't always make an effort to hire. So I appreciate that we're doing that. The block club thing, I think is great. I, I hope, and, you know, you need to explain that now, but I hope that's going to be expanded. You know, citywide, I know that the talk so far has been a lot about block clubs in the fifth war. But I think in order to keep violence down and to focus on the entire city, we have to make sure that, you know, those kind of activities are expanded throughout. I do applaud, and Audrey, you know, you and I have talked about this, having activities at Robert Crown, because again, when I came into office, kids were put out of Robert Crown, and that's back when it was old and had leaky ceilings. And we don't have any other really youth place here in South Evanston. So our kids in South Evanston are left out of a lot of activities. So I know we tried to have the community events at the ninth war twice this summer. We were ready, ready not unfortunately, but, you know, I do appreciate that there has been some intention on getting to South Evanston and not just having it be, you know, Howard Street and then all the way back up to the fifth war, which is my experience before these efforts started. I think the other thing that I will add is, I appreciate you saying that this is not, you know, this is one part of the situation. You know, I sat on, maybe you don't know, but I sat on the mayor's was Reimagining Public Safety, and one of the work groups was Violence Prevention, where we asked lots of people who had, you know, academic experience and personal experience with violence to participate. They made some recommendations that, I know are not part of the presentation tonight, but I did send around, and I would hope people would take a look at. I think it's, you know, we have to have, you know, some very bold things we're doing. We have to have some things that we know work. We have to have some things that, as Councilmember Kelly pointed out, you know, are just kind of best practice academically, although academics don't know everything. I think particularly working with Andy from Northwestern, who was the chair of that committee. I mean, for a living, he researches violence prevention programs, and so he definitely has some insight on what works throughout the, the Chicago metropolitan area. And so hopefully, we can utilize that. I don't know if that work would come to your department, or as per Andy's recommendation, to have a whole different kind of unit working on this. But I think it's something that we as a council and we as a city need to at least look at. I know we're not going to do that tonight, but I also think this speaks to how we bring citizens together, ask them to give input, and then sometimes don't necessarily take their input into consideration when making decisions. So I would hope that the council, maybe at a January meeting, or whenever we get into the point of voting on this, since it's just for discussion tonight, can also look and see how we can incorporate some of those things, or at least have a discussion on those things. And I think the other thing is, one more thought. Oh, and, and this maybe doesn't fall under you, Audrey, and I don't know. You know, I hate to talk necessarily about Mr. Green's comments about the parents, because definitely I know parents have a role. But I think as someone else mentioned, parents, particularly nowadays, have lots of stressors on them. And particularly in the black community that I grew up here in Evanston, we're not as tight as we used to be in helping to help each other with their children. But, I mean, I think one thing that I recognize from being in schools and having my own kids is, you know, a lot of the kids don't feel welcome in our community. So I know part of that is what Audrey's working on, but I think as a city, we need to kind of look at that, right? I mean, that's kind of all of our responsibility. And so when we think about kids who are out and being violent to other people, you know, a lot of research talks about, you know, you, you do to other people what you feel like, you know, either someone has done to you, or you don't feel like you kind of have worth in this community. And so Evanston is definitely not a place where we should have kids walking around feeling like they're not useful. But, but I know there has been some of the experience, even of some of my friends' kids, where they don't feel like they're part of this community. Either they are not really welcome in schools, or the schools, you know, have them labeled as bad kids. They go to after-school programs, or they're not welcome. And they just kind of start to feel like they're on the outskirts of the city. And this is a small city to feel like that. So hopefully, somewhere, somehow, as a city, we can kind of think through that and make sure we have passed our signage. We actually have some welcoming communities for all of our students. I know the Moran Center does a good job about that, but that, that's something, again, not Audrey's department necessarily, but citywide, that we need to think about how we're welcoming all of our kids, the ones who are, you know, good students, not good students, good sports athletes, or just, you know, regular, everyday kids like me can still feel like they're an important part of this community. So I think that's really important for us to think about, just as we think about this issue citywide.
Thanks, Councilmember Fleming.
The, everyone who's asked to speak has spoken for a first time, so we're going to go to folks requesting to speak for a second time, beginning with Councilmember Reed, who has three minutes and thirty-five seconds left.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Audrey, for the presentation. We got an email that Councilmember Fleming sent around from Monique Parsons, who made a pretty good comment. And she said there that, you know, there's, there isn't one recipe for, you know, for, for, for violence reduction, for solving this, you know, almost intractable issue. But when looking at this proposal and hearing everything you've, you've said, one, I'm glad, you know, we have someone with your capability leading this effort. Certainly, you know, you've demonstrated a very clear and deep understanding of these issues and what works at stake and what's needed here. But when looking at this recipe that's put before us, I mean, it, it seems to me to meet, you know, the, the basic criteria for a good recipe. I think, you know, we're ready to put this in the oven and something good will come out. I mean, it's, you know, it's a holistic plan that includes wraparound services that addresses not just the needs of our youth, but the, the adults that are, you know, taking care of the youth. You know, it has some proven metrics. I mean, the metric about recidivism. The seat tickets, I don't know if that would be considered recidivism, but the, the efforts, but recidivism and not having folks who are interacting with the program, you know, become repeat offenders is all really positive. The extending services, it seems like year-round now. I'm thinking that it's not a ghost memory or a ghost recollection of what I read or heard, that there's also, you know, some looking into just like a winter employment program as well here. So I, I am, you know, really happy about this. And I appreciate Councilmember Kelly and Fleming's, their, their questions. I think it is really important that as we're moving forward with this, that we're, we're looking at things that are backed with, you know, a mix of that academic research and, and, and ground efficacy. So really looking forward to supporting this. I actually want to make a motion that we move this forward to our next regular city council meeting, that this item be placed on the agenda as a special order of business for, I guess, introduction. I don't know if it needs two readings, but I would, I think. So I'll make that motion.
So Councilmember Reed has made the motion to put this item on the agenda at the January tenth meeting as a special order of business. I'll just say for the record, and I, I definitely, I think there's been some confusion about whether we're voting tonight. I think we definitely, definitely should not vote tonight on an issue of this importance when the agenda says for discussion. And there's, I believe at this time, only six council members left. But I, I think, I think the great thing is I believe nine voting members of city council and I all support this level of funding for this kind of work. You know, the, the question just is how many, what work needs to be done to, for example, integrate these recommendations with the recommendations of the Violence Prevention Working Group that you sit on? What other community input do we want to receive? What other data do we want to analyze? So, you know, I just want to be clear that this, this type of initiative, I think, has universal support. And I think as soon as people feel ready to, to vote, we should do that. But if you want to certainly take a vote now to ensure that it appears on the January tenth agenda, irrespective of other considerations, that's obviously something we can do.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like, well, I haven't had an opportunity to speak yet, but I will second Councilmember Reed. I did come here ready to vote and take action on this, this issue. Again, to everyone that's paying attention, this is, it's, it's a budget. And a lot of this will go into effect next year. The source, for those of you that are on the call, it's coming from our ARPA funds. I couldn't think of a better fund to pull this money from. And I'm willing to second it. And so that'll be first. I don't know if you want to take action on that, and I would like to make my comments.
Of course. So you're, you're going to be called on next because you're the only person who hasn't spoken yet, who's requesting to speak. But so Councilmember Reed moves to place a special order of business on the agenda for January tenth. On the topic of SP two today, Councilmember Braithwaite seconds. I don't think we need to discuss. Well, does anyone want to, the various hands that are up, does anyone want to speak to the motion? I'll pause for like three seconds.
I, I just think in terms of order, it would be great to hear from everyone first. So, because there may be some, you know, some changes, even if that was to increase funding in Sardaria, so.
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't, what I think Councilmember Reed is achieving is making sure this item is on the agenda. There's nothing that would stop us from amending it. You know, I, I do not, I, I think it would be a mistake to lock folks into voting up or down on exactly this on January tenth. I think the point is we want, you know, I believe Councilmember Reed wants the conversation to move forward and doesn't want folks to be worried this is going to drop off the agenda and show up again in April or something, which I think we all agree would be a mistake.
Yes, that is exactly the intention. Certainly, even the motion, I, I think after this vote is taken, discussion is still in order for this, for this item. So certainly not looking to cut off debate at, at all either.
Agreed. I think Councilmember Reed wants to speak to the, the motion, though, is that right?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, that being the objective, Councilmember Reed, I'm fully supportive of, of moving this discussion forward. I don't want to foreclose the possibility of incorporating some of the concepts that were in the memo we received today from the Reimagining Public Safety Committee. You know, I think this is an all of the above approach. And what's in the memo in our packet tonight is part of, of a very important program, but maybe not all of it. And so I want to make sure we do have the opportunity to discuss, you know, what else needs to be done.
Great. So what I'd like to do now is go to a motion, a vote on Councilmember Reed's motion, at the end of which we'll go to Councilmember Braithwaite for his first time speaking.
I also wanted to finish a
Oh, fair. Councilmember Reed will still have the floor for, for another, gosh, let's say, anyway, for a bit more time.
Whatever, very, very shortly. Yeah.
All right. So would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to place the special order of business on the January tenth agenda?
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
With six voting in favor and two, and what? And nobody voting against, obviously, the motion passes, and there will be a special order of business on the January tenth agenda. Returning to Councilmember Reed.
Yes, just to, to wrap up, I will say, you know, one, there, there are some changes that I'd like to see here. I'd, I'd love to see an increase in funding, particularly one, uh, there there are some changes that I'd like to see here. I'd I'd love to see an increase in funding, particularly, um, for for uh, services such as childcare. Uh, I would love to see that incorporated in. And also, um, to the point, uh, I have seen the, um, email, um, going around from, uh, the committee that I I also sit on. Um, he, and I'm on all of the, uh, Reimagining Police Committees, uh, in some regard, uh, but I'm loosely involved in the, uh, in the Violence Prevention Group and, you know, there's an eighth warder there, um, uh, Van der Ringen Seemark, who is really taking leadership there along with Professor Papa Christos and Councilmember Fleming as well. Um, and so I certainly think, uh, you know, being aware of where that group is, um, I I'd love to see those, uh, uh, suggestions incorporated in as well. Um, I'd really love to see, um, you know, I I think we're achieving it here, but, you know, more kind of expressly naming it. Um, there's a program out of Oakland, California, where they took the, you know, folks in their community, I think in their community, it was the fifty people who were most likely to be shot, um, or to um, shoot someone, uh, and enrolled them in a program where they received a stipend. Um, and, uh, that saw a significant, um, and that program's been around now for uh, quite a while. And so they've seen a significant reduction in, uh, violent crime, uh, as a result. Um, and so, uh, really looking to replicate, uh, something like that here, speaking to points that were raised earlier by Councilmember Kelly and Fleming regarding, uh, you know, using some metric-based programming. And so, thank you. Uh, thank you, Audrey, and the whole team, uh, for this presentation. And and for putting this all together and and doing the, I actually have very one quick question, because I I didn't know if I got this from Councilmember Kelly's question. So, uh, compared two thousand nineteen funding, uh, for, uh, your work to twenty twenty one funding, how, what is the difference? And then once you're done answering that, I I see the floor.
So I I can get you the actual numbers, but, um, just a a small amount of increase. So now for twenty twenty two, we're at like one point six. So for the two years prior to, just a little bit less than that for each of those years. Now, this does not include the two hundred thousand that, um, that was voted for the Safe Summer Initiative for twenty twenty one. Those were specific. So when Councilmember Fleming talks about, um, block clubs, um, so those areas, um, were specifically a part of the COVID and, uh, related funds. And so we had to have it in certain areas. This funding does not have that issue. So I don't see why there could not be black clubs all over, um, Evanston. Just more in areas that have a high propensity to violence.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we now go to Councilmember Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll I'll go ahead and be brief, just given the hour. Audrey, I just want to first say, you know, thank you to you and your team for, you know, coming up with this real comprehensive plan that represents our first step in such a short period of time. Uh, as I said earlier, I was definitely willing to support it tonight and looking forward to supporting it uh, in January. I also want to acknowledge, I was looking around the Zoom call, how many of our city staff that we have tuning in, as well as, uh, members of our police department, as well as our community partners. Your presence, uh, is definitely appreciated tonight. So my one question that I have, Audrey, in 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 reading through some of the, uh, the asks in terms of the job positions, what is our City of Evanston's policy on marijuana use? And will, and does that have an impact on, A, can you answer the question? And B, will it have an impact on some of the work that you're looking to do in the in twenty twenty two?
Uh, so definitely. Thanks. Thanks for that question. So I I think this comes as a part of, um, some conversations that I've had with council members about young people who I've I've contacted individuals and said, hey, I need a job right now. And then the young person tells us, I can't pass the marijuana test. And so, um, I reached out to our, uh, interim human ser- um, human resources manager. And currently, um, they are reviewing and revising the policy related to cannabis use to, uh, really be in line with, um, you know, the current laws, uh, because there are some, um, safety sensitive positions um, that would still require, um, a test for, a drug test for marijuana. But know that, um, hopefully, when I come back in in January, I will be able to definitively answer that because it does make a huge difference in the individuals that we work with. Um, we currently still have them placed. Um, and I also need, you know, so anybody who's listening to this or seeing this, you know, I've said before, if you have a job and you are willing to give, and we call it a second chance policy, but it really needs to be called a first chance policy. Because some people aren't even given a first chance. So a part of this needs to be that we are strengthening, you know, what we currently have moving forward with others, but also with those, um, partners. I need to be able to have jobs that say, if someone comes and they're not really ready to work, I can put them in the back folding napkins or doing something that won't send them back out into the community. So I also need those jobs and those employers, not just cannabis, but someone who will allow us to work with them for those eight weeks mentioned in this project to say, this is someone who hasn't worked. And I understand that they are having services wrapped around them in an effort to create a career path for them. So if you're listening or looking and you have that opportunity, please reach out to me.
Right. Well, well, thank you. I'll just close by saying, I know that I think I'm still chairing Human Services, and this may be something that we can take up in that committee to review our policies for both our staff as well as our youth, uh, moving forward. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to have to fall off because of a family men event, but I do want to thank you very much for your presiding, uh, to Councilmember Burns and Reed. Uh, thank you very much for, uh, calling this meeting, and I hope everyone has a wonderful safe new year.
Point of, point of order. I'm sorry, Councilmember Braithwaite. Uh, if you drop off, um, we will no longer have reform.
I think that's not true. I think we have, um, councilmembers Kelly, Nusma, Burns, uh, Reed, and Fleming, plus me.
Perfect. Oh, okay. I have, I have kids and family just arrived in town for the holiday as well as celebrating a birthday. So, if I can remove myself, I will. And, uh, thank you all very much. Have a wonderful holiday and a great year.
Merry Christmas, Peter.
Thank you very much.
So there are four people, uh, who are still requesting to speak a second time, uh, beginning with Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, given the hour, I will just, I will share some concerns uh, that, uh, I hope we will be able to address in the course of this conversation as it moves forward. Uh, in no particular order here, I I want to learn a little bit more about, uh, how how, um, the city, uh, coordinates the Division of S- of Labor, uh, with the wraparound services offered with District sixty five and District two oh two. Yeah, you know, the school districts obviously have a, you know, vital role to play here. So I I'm looking forward to learning a little bit more how we coordinate that outreach and and what work, uh, is being done by the districts themselves. Um, I also want to talk about, uh, about gun control. Uh, and I think we are not having a complete conversation if if we're not addressing the issue of guns on the streets directly. And so one of the things I'll be looking for as this discussion moves forward is, you know, whatever kind of quantitative data we have on, uh, on the number of firearms in Evanston, you know, both lawfully registered and and unlawfully possessed, whatever kind of, uh, data metrics we have there, uh, as well as, you know, what else, if anything, we might be able to do to, you know, further restrict, uh, the presence of handguns in our community, uh, both lawfully owned handguns and, uh, and unlawfully, uh, possessed firearms. Um, and last but not least, uh, budgetary issues, and we have, you know, a great opportunity to use some ARPA funding to get this, uh, program moving. Uh, but let's, uh, make sure we have a plan, uh, to continue, uh, the programs when the ARPA funds run out in a couple of years. You know, this work is so important, uh, it's going to need to continue. And let's make sure we're we're thinking about long-term sources of financing. So that's all I wanted to add for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Burns, technically for the second time, but he spoke for eight seconds the first time. So, uh, go ahead, Councilmember.
Uh, yeah, just quickly wanted to respond to, uh, uh, to what was just stated about, um, a- about, uh, uh, cannabis and, uh, in hiring that, as as far as I understand, there's no technology right now uh, that can accurately say whether or not cannabis, whether or not somebody is under the influence of cannabis. And so they could have, um, they could have consumed cannabis the night before, a week before, a month before, it's still present in their system, and they're excluded from job opportunities because of it. So, uh, I would, I would love to take a look at it if that technology has changed. I, you know, I I'd love to have infor- information on that, but I don't think it has. And so, um, would have my full support in taking a look at that, uh, as we look to to make sure that, um, Evanston residents have local opportunities in our municipal government, uh, to 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 be employed. Um, you know, I also want to just flag that in partnership with Nathan Norman, who was our uh, new workforce development manager for the City of Evanston, uh, we've kind of called, uh, a a meeting with, uh, city staff, um, you know, economic development manager, our bureau chief, capital planning and city engineer to city, Mayor Biss, an interim, um, city manager Storey, um, city manager Kandersky, sorry, Audrey Thompson and and her team, Dave Stoneback, and on and on. And so I I made a referral, one of my first referrals I made was to look at lo- local hiring to municipal jobs. Uh, I agree that we need to lead first on that, and there's some some wonderful opportunities, um, to to hire locally. We've, um, I think twenty something percent of our current employees uh, live in Evanston, and I think we can do better than that. So we're going to have a discussion about that soon. And then and hopefully we'll have something, uh, I know Nathan will have something to recommend to the council at a later date. Um, and then I did have an opportunity to look at the the memo that was sent to us, um, from the, uh, I think it's called Violence Prevention, uh, Working Group, which is a working group of the Reimagining Public Safety Committee. And so I wanted to respond in line to uh, to some of those comments. And so one of the first things it it's it called attention to was to expand, the importance to expand outreach overall and outreach to, um, to older residents, you know, twenty six, twenty nine, twenty two, between twenty six and twenty nine years old. Um, I I think we we've heard today that this, what is being proposed by, uh, the Youth and Young Adult Team is to expand the age uh, in both directions. So as young as eleven all the way to twenty nine years of age. And so I think that adequately addresses, uh, one of the recommendations that was called out, uh, in that memo. Uh, the other thing I think is is also addressed is they talked about adding an additional outreach worker. So I think that also addresses the 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 concern about there not being enough focus on on outreach. There's a um, a four-time position that is requested at a hundred thousand dollars that will put another person uh, on our team to to work with young people and, um, and young adults, uh, to address harm and to connect them with not only city services, but services around the community offered by organizational partners. Um, another, uh, comment was, uh, the working group, the development of more specific street neighborhood-based outreach focusing on those most likely involved in violence. I think we've heard several times tonight that that is exactly what this recommendation calls for, uh, is to to put money in the pockets of people who are directly harmed by violence. Um, not just gun violence, but violence of all kind, and to, uh, put them in a position where they can lead in this work. And I think that, uh, again, has been, um, fully expressed today by Audrey and her team. Um, i- it also talks about, uh, hiring, hiring and training individuals most impacted by violence to do this work. Again, we've heard that that's exactly what one of the recommendations is. Um, it it talks about a more comprehensive programming around outreach efforts specifically geared towards this population, including case management, uh, educational therapeutic services, uh, to the point of case management. I I think, and Audrey, correct me if I'm wrong, but the current outreach team does um, currently, uh, provides case management, uh, for Evanston residents. And so I think, um, uh, currently, we are focused on providing case management, updating those files, uh, working on, um, you know, support plans or life plans. They have different names depending on the organization. And so I think those things are currently in practice today with our reach team. Um, the educational therapeutic services, I've been happy to, uh, to partner with, uh, the the Mental Health Task Force recently um, to visit what they call living rooms, uh, which provide, uh, kind of mental health, uh, treatment and support and other related programs. We've now visited a living room in Stokie, um, uh, we went to one in Wheaton, and I I think that is, I think, I think, uh, providing a living room in Evanston, locating a living room in Evanston is probably a a a better um, response to that concern. I don't think that's 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 something that, um, you know, actually, let me, let me back up and say, Audrey mentioned that one of the positions that their department requested in the budget that we just passed was to hire a clinician. And one of the things that we heard today from, uh, representative at the living room in Wheaton is that one of the biggest costs to locating a a living room in a city is, um, not the the peer supporters, which is more so folks who have lived experience um, dealing with, uh, the the relevant trauma, but to hire a a clinician. And and so I think because we already have that position, if there's a way to locate that person in the living room, or at least in a facility that's near the living room, uh, there's some, there's some, um, ways that that we can save a cost as we think about, uh, having a living room here in the city. So I think that's how that, those two can kind of play, uh, play, play well together. Um, and I I think the last thing I just want to touch on is, uh, it talks about developing a a new unit and uh, yeah, so I share the rethinking, uh, the organizational structure, uh, Working Group, which is a working group of the Reimagining Public Safety Committee. And that's exactly what we're looking at. There's a model, um, that a city in Minnesota, Brookline, Minnesota, is working on to create this new department. And under it would be the police and fire departments, two new new departments, one being a community response department, which is similar to the discussions we've had around kind of alternative, uh, 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 the alternative response, um, teams that can go out and a lot more mobile and can address crisis. So I think those is the conversations we're having right now, uh, at the working group level, and we will be prepared to make those recommendations in the next several months. And and then the last thing I want to call attention to is one of their recommendations, uh, talked about a program called Choose to Change, uh, as a model that we should take a look at. And just on their, I'm on their website now, just looking at it. I think the only thing that um, it isn't that we are currently doing, um, potentially, or, um, I don't see in the recommendation is, uh, it says around-the-clock support and crisis intervention. And, um, and so as a question to to Audrey and her team, uh, you know, we know calls can come in pretty late, you know, crisis can happen at all times. Do we have anything in place currently for, um, a crisis that happened, you know, in the early mornings, for for example?
So it's just overtime. So if they're called out, it's overtime. And normally that would be Jeremy, who's the supervisor. So then it wouldn't be overtime because he's now the supervisor. But, yes, so he would be able to go out and then to dispatch any of our outreach team. But I think we got to have a larger discussion as to what we're responding to. Um, and so I think that, you know, offline, you and I, any other council member can discuss that. But I think we've got to kind of talk about, because there have been so many discussions about what we are responding to, um, in lieu of, um, law enforcement. And so, um, I think that really, um, we really need to have a larger discussion about that.
All right. Thank you. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, um, with just a couple of minutes left, is Council- Next, with just a couple of minutes left is councilmember Kelly.
Great, thank you. So yeah, I just want to say all these, I think all the proposals look solid and of course I'd be, you know, amenable to, to spending two or three times or whatever we need to spend to have a positive impact on, on our, on our youth in this town. But I do, I do want to concur with Alderman Newsman and, and it would be, I think it is important because this is a, based on, this is going to be, this initial effort will come entirely out of ARPA. I would just like to know that we're looking at some long-term funding options so that we can see those and we can plan for it so that this does, this program does continue and strengthens over the years without us hitting roadblocks because we haven't thought through the funding and how that's going to work. And I also think it's important for all of us, you know, the accountability piece, if it would be possible for that January 10th meeting to have sort of a comparison chart so that we can understand the costs of what it's, what's being carried out right now with the 1.6 million and why we're coming up short and what we need the money for. I think that would be helpful to understand, just to ensure, you know, so that we can all wrap our heads around where the money's needed in order to really create a more supportive system for our youth in Evanston. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And then with just a few moments left is councilmember Fleming.
Yeah, so if I could just, for staff, have a couple suggestions that we can have on the memo for January. Although councilmember Burns went through the memo, I think it would just be, you know, good practice since we brought these folks together, they met for months about their recommendations that we have them come and expound on them. I don't think we should try to just use their memo to, you know, again, back to people's comment about us listening in public. Because I know even in that conversation, which maybe is not in that memo, let's talk about violence reduction, you know, you know, to the victim, right? And so there's violence that happens to the victim. I know it was pointed out that when Evangeline's son unfortunately was murdered, and I was part of the council, we went to the block where he was murdered and talked to those people, but we never went to the block where she lived to talk to her neighbors about how they experienced violence of losing him. So I think there are some things we should talk through or hear from about this committee so if they can maybe come if they're available in January 10th. Also, in terms of the workforce stuff, and I think also Bobby brought this up and I wanted to see if we can have more information. We were, you know, told that Nathan was going to be the new workforce development. So I know this proposal talks about some workforce opportunities too. So I would love to have some clarity between, you know, the new workforce development and this, you know, new proposal for workforce development and how we're going to make sure we're using our dollars appropriately. I think Bobby's point about drug testing was spot on and Bobby, we've mentioned this, you know, unfortunately for years, again, in HR, didn't really get anywhere about drug testing and how, you know, some drugs are, anyway, we need to have a longer conversation about that and maybe Audrey, I don't know if that's for the January 10s or just kind of further down the line. And then also just for the ARPA funds, if we can have, maybe this is in the memo, I think I missed it, but just like where would bucket this would come out of? I think for the public, that's good to know. We talked a lot about ARPA spending and having a, a plan and we still don't really have one. So good if we can kind of lay out where in the ARPA money this is coming from, so we can just kind of subtract from that if this is what we decide to move forward in would be helpful. So those are kind of the three things that I would love to have more information about on January 10th, if that is when this is going to be for a discussion. I realize we're not going to be able to kind of make a plan that maybe covers everything, but I think it's important we kind of know what other things are out there in the ethernet. And then just to fill in the people who are listening, councilmember Biss and Autumn Revell and I have been working with the MITA to try to get a living room open. It's been part of the work that we've been doing coming out of Alternatives 911 Committee. There's also response team that's starting to work in Evanston already. They kind of have had some soft meetings, they're trying to get fully staffed, but as I mentioned before, state of Illinois is paying for that now, they contracted with Trilogy, so that work is starting too. So I don't know, Mayor Biss, when is the appropriate time to do that? But we should probably have an update, or I can give one or Revell can give one about that, just so we don't have different pockets of the city kind of working on the same thing without knowing what, what is happening there. Because the living room, we hope to get open next year and the 911 response team hopes to be fully staffed and up and working next year. So those are two things that we can educate ourselves and the community about and also not have other, you know, staff and community members working on when it's already kind of pretty far down the road already.
And Mayor Biss, I just wanted to quickly respond directly to that. So we have Chris, Christopher Bayer, who is the clinical director for Trilogy Behavior of Health's New Model Crisis Response Program. He reached out to me and said the state of Illinois is going to provide 24/7, 365 mobile in-person psychiatric crisis support in that, as you said, councilmember Fleming, that Trilogy is assigned to, to work with community members in Evanston. So I invited him out to the next rethinking organizational structure meeting, which is, I think tomorrow at 7:00 PM. And so he's going to provide an update on that. And then, and again, we're touring, picking up on, on the work that you started and councilmember Revell, we've been going out touring to different sites and I'm living rooms and I'm sure that will culminate in some RFP that goes out because it's not just, there's a few different organizations that do it. There's Jocelyn Center, there's, there's Turning Point, we went out today, won the day, there's NAMI, so I'm sure that would have to go through some type of RFP process, but we definitely were, were kind of advancing the work that you and Revell started, which was great work.
Right, but that's what I mean, I think, and this is another meeting, but we, we met with Trilogy last week to get updated on what they're doing. And then we also have met with the MITA about an actual space we maybe could use and met with all those folks you talked about already about what would be in that RFP. So just, so Daniel, you can take it from there, but I think we're doing the same work without coordination.
Would you, would you, would you be available for that meeting? For councilmember Fleming, we can take it offline, but I'm just.
Yeah, if you email me when it is.
I got you, I'll share it with you.
And our committee hasn't been meeting just for the sake of getting all the things put together before we keep using citizen time without having movement.
I think we're sort of spinning out of control here a little bit. Councilmembers Kelly and Reed both raised their hands again. Councilmember Kelly has a few seconds left, councilmember Reed definitely doesn't, but I'll, I'll let him speak for a bit, but I just want to rein it in a little bit for folks' attention spans frankly, given the importance of the topic. Go ahead, councilmember.
So very quickly, I, I've also heard about apps. I'm just wondering if we can make, how we can make this super accessible to all youth. So as a teacher, it'd be great every year. I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, if every student was able to download an app for, you know, like a Let's Talk, I've seen this in other towns, so that everybody has easy access to get, to get, to get help or to get help for a friend at risk. So I would just ask that too, if we can, when you come back on the 10th, if there's, if you could maybe talk to us a little bit about ways for our youth to reach out, really, really easy, accessible ways. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you. Yeah, just, just quickly as we wrap, you know, there's been, I, I'll say that councilmember Fleming and Revell and I have made it, I think, really exciting progress in the living room issue and it's, it's great that there's, there's such broad interest in it. There's, as councilmember Fleming indicated, a location that seems very, very promising, a partnership with the MITA. And I, I think it would probably make sense to have a full update on that on the January 10th meeting as well, given the, the connection with this topic. So I can, I can commit to giving up that update. I just want to, just real quickly, just want to add, you know, I think we heard a lot of incredibly promising and important stuff tonight. And, and as I indicated earlier, I think there's universal support for spending these resources on these priorities. It's just, there's just nothing that's important and, and we're all there unanimously. I think the, the only challenge is we don't have enough, we'll never have enough to do everything we want to do. And so I think we want to make sure that what we do is done as efficiently as possible. And so, you know, I think making sure that we're all, all collaborating. You know, I think, I think, you know, the, the recommendation was emailed to us and was read out loud earlier, making sure that the Violence Prevention Working Group of the Reimagining Public Safety Committee doesn't, is simply at the table and, and making sure that those, those recommendations are being incorporated as we move forward, but also utilizing the expertise that we have, you know. So, you know, we've heard about Professor Papa Christos from Northwestern, I also met yesterday with Rosanna Anders, she's the executive director of the U Chicago Crime Lab. You know, these, these are some of the nation's leading experts who, you know, cities like Chicago and New York and LA kind of reach out to, to, to help them with their balance prevention work. They happen to live in Evanston, they happen to be ETHS parents, they happen to be willing to donate their, their time and the time of their staff. And we're already in process getting an MOU in place for data sharing with the EPD and these educational institutions. And I just think that any data analysis we can bring to ensure that we are spending every dime in the most efficient way possible is going to be critical because we're just not going to have enough for any of our points of view. And the last thing I want to say is I also today spoke with Sharice Williams from the Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority, and they are going to be using some of their ARPA allotment to balance prevention programs specifically in gap areas, which is to say the, the reasons of the state that they don't ordinarily fund all the time. And so again, there's a great opportunity for us here to access some of those resources as well, if we're all collaborating together, if we're all on the same page, and if we have real data to back up what we're, what we're going to do. So I, I just think there's, this is an incredible need. It's a tragedy that we're having this conversation because of what occurred on November 28th, but that also places a solemn responsibility on all of us to do everything, everything as well as we can, as efficiently as we can and as coordinated a way as possible so that we prevent future conversations like this from having to occur for this reason. So with that, I really, really appreciate the extraordinary work done by staff. I look forward to next steps on this and to, to supporting you and your effort to provide these critical services for our community. And that brings us to call the wards, beginning with councilmember Kelly.
Did he just call me? Did you just call me, Daniel?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, I have, I have no, no comments.
Councilmember Newsman.
No report this evening, other than happy holidays, everybody. Please enjoy your family.
Councilmember Burns.
Yeah, just wanted to invite 14 residents out and really even the broader community out, so the next 14 meeting will be on the 30th of this month at 7:00 PM. You can find the virtual link on the city of Evanston's website under the calendar. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
Okay, yeah, I just briefly want to, as always, announce, we just had our eighth ward meeting last week, so a really good discussion there. Folks are excited for, for this discussion that we had here tonight as well as continuing city manager search. Our next ward meeting will be January 28th, so we are returning to the normal schedule of having ward meetings on the fourth Thursday, I'm sorry, it's the 27th, not the 28th, the fourth Thursday of every month at 6:00 PM. So looking forward to seeing residents there. Oh, and I do also want to announce, I have a resident in, as a result of that ward meeting, there's a resident here in the eighth ward, Linda Carter, who I'm going to share this flyer with my colleagues here as well as the city, but she wants to participate in a Lumineers project, which is, you know, turning on, to build a sense of community and belonging, a sense of community particularly after the tragedy that we are collectively facing with the shooting and then the, the, you know, follow-up to that with weapons being found in the high school. So the idea is that for a number of days, I'll send all the details out to folks, that folks would flip on their porch lights between a certain time as a sense of unity and lighting up the community and use blue tea lights to set out in front of the house. And so I think it's a, it's a beautiful idea. I think it culminates in a single day event. Church near the civic centers participating in this as well, and I will get the details out to folks. So, thank you.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yeah, one, thank you to my peers, thank you to the ninth ward residents and city staff who reached out regarding the loss of my mother. I will just say it's a huge loss for everyone who knew her. It also is maybe a huge relief for everybody who knew her because she could be quite a pain in the ass, but we loved her. I will say, you know, watching her die of COVID was quite hard. She spent three weeks alone in the hospital, which was not ideal. So for anyone who has not been vaccinated, I would just implore you to, to do so or to think more about it. It is, you know, I've not had to watch many people die, but that was, that was, you know, death is unpleasant already, but, you know, it was very unpleasant. And I will say in her honor that she was regretful that she did not, you know, choose to get the vaccine. So, you know, hopefully, you know, her life will not be in vain in that way, that other people can just take our family experience and think more seriously about getting the vaccine, particularly as we, you know, know the numbers are rising, which is why we're back onto the virtual space right now, that we would just, you know, it's very serious. So I would, I would hate for someone else to have to go through that. With that, I have another announcement. So I'm going to read it because it's kind of a little longer. So with the death of my mom, as death always does, it reminds me, has reminded me that life is very short. I think we forget that because we are busy living and no one thinks about when they're going to die. My mother was a fighter. Many times she fought really just for her own basic needs or the needs of other people, you know. More recently, if she was a senior, she was fighting for safe senior housing, which she did have, but she knew there was not enough of it. You know, I am privileged to know that I'm a manifestation of my mother's dreams. I have financial privileges that she did not have. I'm able to work in spaces she was not able to. I don't take that lightly at all. But what I do know is that what my mother wanted for me, what she did not have for herself, was really a chance to rest and do things that she enjoyed. So she really fought to her last breath for things that she really saw as social justice issues, which I think we would all agree. And, you know, I want to spend my time doing the same. I think what I realized from my mother's death and what I realized for myself is that while I love city of Evanston, I don't love my role at city council. I joined city council to really improve the city in the way I, which I thought that I could do. And I've had some successes, but ultimately this position is become more, I think harmful to my health than joyful to me. And while I know that no advocacy is necessarily always full of joy, I've decided that this one is just too difficult. So I love Evanston, it's the home of my ancestors, people know that my family has been here since the late 1800s and I'm the fourth generation to serve this city because that is how we were raised. But to honor my mother, to honor myself, to keep my integrity, to keep my sanity, I'm going to be stepping down from city council. So I will be leaving at the end of January. My goal is to get us through the city council manager search because I know that that's super important. Hopefully we can choose a candidate by then. I realize I leave guaranteed income on the table, which is another project that I'm super passionate about, so hopefully I can work to keep that going as a citizen. We're in the, hopefully final stages, we're working with the researchers now at Northwestern to get that piece solidified so we can go ahead and start giving out money. But being on this role is just not beneficial to me and my family anymore. And, and again, I, I realize it's a job of service, clearly did not sign up for the paycheck or for the ease of the position, but, you know, as I said, you know, definitely gives you clarity. And this is something I've been thinking about for a while and realize, you know, I don't know how long I have, so I want to spend my time doing things that I love, even if they're things that are hard, in a space that nurtures my spirit and that allows me to be fully whole and, you know, seen and heard. And I just, I don't think this is a space for me to do that anymore. So I wanted to let my council peers know, I will send out a letter to my ward tomorrow. I did speak to the mayor, so it is his, I guess, I don't know if it's by city code or state law, whatever, but it's his duty to select my replacement. So he and I will work together to make sure there is as public of a process as possible for that. I've always told my ward that, you know, democracy is only as good as people who participate. So hopefully people have been thinking about participating. I've always told them I would not be here forever. And while I love them and it has been great to serve the ward, it is time for me to move on. So Daniel and I will be sending out more information about, you know, what that process looks like and when that process will start, and so that the ninth ward can be fully represented when I step off next year. And then, oh, my last statement was to do with our Zoom bombing. So hopefully we'll have better parameters in place for our last Zoom meeting in June, not June, excuse me, January. Luke has reached out about some better parameters. Luke has reached out about some better parameters, so hopefully that does not continue to happen in our ward meeting. But as the Ninth Ward always shows, that they are up for the task, and so they always join back on. And so if it does happen, we'll just join back on and have our meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember. I know you weren't, you know, hoping for speeches, but I just, I just can't let this go without thanking you for your service, your insight. You know, I don't think anybody who's ever seen you for two seconds would be surprised about your brilliance or your toughness. But what I didn't necessarily expect to find when I joined this body was your friendship. And I just want to say that it's meant a lot to me personally, as I've tried to learn how to do this job. And if your reasons for leaving are anything other than what they are, which I consider to be pretty sacred, I would be doing everything I possibly could to convince you to stay. But out of, out of respect for what you've said and your commitment to yourself, I just, I just simply want to say thank you for everything that you've done for the city and, and for me. And I know you're not moving anywhere, so I'm not going to say I'm going to miss you, but I'm definitely going to miss you on Monday evenings more than I can possibly articulate. Thank you for everything. And I, so everyone's hands going up now. I'll just, I guess, my inclination is to call on folks because I think folks have a lot of strong feelings about what you've given the city. So I'm going to call on folks, and if you want to overrule me, that's your right. But for now, I'm going to go. In order for folks to raise their hands, Nathan, followed by Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, I'm a mayor, I'll be extremely brief, but I wanted to, and this is Nathan Norman, Workforce Development Coordinator. I just wanted to say, Councilmember Fleming, I truly appreciate your service over the years. I appreciate what you've meant to the Evanston community. You will be truly missed. I look forward to just seeing you around the town, but your work here has been both efficacious and prodigious. You embody what a council member should be and is. I respect you on multiple levels and I wish you well. Sorry for your loss. And Evanston, the community of Evanston has truly appreciated you and benefited from your services. Thank you and be well.
Councilmember Reed.
I'll be really short as well, but I just want to add my voice to saying thank you for your service, Councilmember Fleming. You know, during my time both as a council member, you've been a really great partner. I'm going to miss sitting next to you and, you know, having you nudge me every so often to say, you know, cut it. So I'm going to miss that. But I just also want to, you know, publicly add my condolences to you and your family, your mom was someone who belonged to the, you know, entire community, just as you belong to the entire community, many members of your family, because of your service and her service. And I just still remember the first day that your mom walked into my office and, you know, was just a lightning rod for advocacy, and you were certainly a manifestation of that as well. So thank you, and I'm hoping that I can still call you sometimes, particularly on issues. Maybe I'll let you keep your sanity and won't reach out, but I certainly hope I can still rely on your wisdom from time to time, particularly regarding issues relating to mental health and social services. So thank you for everything you've done.
Fernando.
Hi, Councilmember Fleming. I am very selfishly saddened because you are my council member, and I know how efficient and effective you are in our ward and how much people love you. One of the reasons why I've stayed in the Ninth Ward is because you're here. I've always felt like you've represented me well, have heard feedback from us as community members and the people you represent very well and have always engaged in, probably the only, one of the only council members that sends out a really good newsletter. Sometimes we don't even attend the meetings because we get everything we need from that newsletter. Thank you so much for every single thing that you've done for us, for our families, for, I'm going to say especially the Latino community. I don't think anyone on council has been as effective as reaching out to that community like you have. You attend the monthly immigration and first-generation undocumented family monthly meetings that were put together during the pandemic. You're the only council member who actively engages with the Latino community and actively attends those meetings. I truly, truly appreciate you for trying to work with every corner of our community, and especially those communities who haven't had an opportunity to be involved in the city in the past. Thank you so much for your service. I'm truly, really going to miss you as my council member.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to say to Councilmember Fleming, first of all, thank you for the courtesy you extended me, as well as the other newly-elected officials. Before we were sworn into office, you know, already helping us out and, and giving us some, some pointers and hopefully starting us in the right direction. You had already served as, it's kind of a role model for me in terms of public engagement with your newsletters and your ward meetings, as Clerk Mendoza just mentioned. So you are stepping down from a position where you have really provided valuable perspective to the community and to myself. So I thank you sincerely for your service. I wish it would continue. I understand where you're coming from and just, please know that you're, you're stepping down from your office with my full respect. Thank you.
Alderman Holmes.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Sorry, trying to set my camera on. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to speak from the community. I am, Cicely, I am, I'm having all these memories. To your grandfather, Mr. White, to your grandmother, Beulah, to your Aunt Edna, to your mom, Marcia, and then you. You come from good stock. Good job was nothing, was the expectation, it was just going to happen, so we knew that. I know you worked hard and that's been appreciated by the community. Just want to thank you for the service, and, you know, we each have to do what we know is best for us. I tell everyone, you know when it's time, you know what you have to do for yourself. So I congratulate you for taking care of you, for making sure that you do that. Your mom was a, she could be a pain, but she was a very strong, very strong independent woman and someone to admire and someone to make you smile about. So I, I thank you for your service and I wish you the very best, but take care of yourself and be blessed.
Councilmember Kelly.
So Cicely, I just want to say thank you so much for really being a model of, for us in showing how to communicate and to really inform your community. You've really held a bar high for us through your newsletters, the events that you hold in your ward. It's really been, you've been a mentor for me in that respect. I really follow that. Thank you. That's really a tremendous, tremendous asset that you've provided to the Ninth Ward. And again.
Councilmember, you muted yourself on the stage.
Was I muted all that time?
Nope, just at the very end.
Okay. And I'm also really grateful that I've had the opportunity to know your mother, become friends with your mother, your daughter, you, you really come from a family of, you are strong women, and I hope to carry a lot of that, you know, that with me and my work going forward. Thank you for that. So again, thank you for your wonderful service, Cicely, and for really setting a high bar for us. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
Councilmember Fleming, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you, you were away at some point in a different state, and then you relocated back to Evanston. Am I wrong on that? Because I remember one, okay, my first time meeting you was actually at, at the Levy Center. It was some community event, I don't know if you recall.
It was when they were looking for the Ninth Ward.
Was that? And just had so many different questions and really good questions at that. I didn't know at the time, I don't even know if you knew at the time, you would be interested in running for office, but I, I just knew then that, that, that you really were going to be a force, not just in politics, but, but just in improving this community. And I always felt a certain kinship because I know the, I guess somewhat the responsibility that you feel we have when you have a parent or some loved one in your household that's really active and involved growing up. And I always felt like we, we both understood just a great responsibility we both had to serve and to give back and to volunteer in our community. Like everyone has said, you are, you know, a model citizen in, in every way, not just as an elected official, but, but the important role that you play in your family's life. It's, it's evident to all of us, you know, just, just how full your life is, which is why I can imagine how this really takes away from you to do other things that you're interested in. But you've served, you've done a great job serving your ward, and I think that's evident in this last election, not having anyone running against you, that's hard to do in politics. People love you, you engage with them, and, 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 you know, one thing I've always liked about you also is that you explain every, every one of your votes and put it in writing and distributed to the ward. Again, you've been a model, a council member, so I wish you the best of luck.
Councilmember Fleming. Oh, yeah, Councilmember Fleming.
So I, the mayor was kind of, let me go last because I did not want to speak more for what we just had, which I appreciate, but is, makes me a little uncomfortable. So I thank you all for that. Dolores, you all right? I actually, before I spoke, I read a letter that I have from my great Aunt Edna, whose campaign poster is behind me from 1974, but when she left Township Supervisor. And I thought about just reading that because it still applies, and she just talked about all that was happening in her life and, you know, unfortunately, all the way she did not feel like the city really appreciated her, right? And there was some opposition against her and all those things, but nonetheless, she was a great role model for me. So I appreciate that you guys saw her legacy in me and the legacy of my mother and other women before me. I just learn by example, but yes, it is, it is, it is time for me to move on. I wish that I could be more effective here, but at a certain point, you just have to kind of know when to fold them. And it, it just became too challenging for me in this fight on city council, so I will take my fight elsewhere. But thank you. This will be our, our last conversation of my leaving. I will get back to the work of my job to represent the Ninth Ward, and our remaining meetings will be about the business of the people. And I will go quietly into the night with no celebration, no pizza party, no mayor, I have told him no plaque, no key to the city, no nothing, just, you know, let me go quietly would be helpful. So anyway, I still live here. I can go to the grocery store now without having questions about the budget. I can do all the things that I have not been able to do for the last five years here in the city and by my RV. So anyhow, thank you all for those sentiments, and I'll be here until we find a new city manager.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you for everything. And seeing no further business to come before us, before somebody else drops an announcement that breaks my heart. This is our last meeting for, of the year. Thanks, everyone, for the really important discussion. Thank you again, Councilmember Fleming, for all you've done. Wishing everyone a safe, healthy, happy, joyful, meaningful holiday. Our next meeting is January 10th, and in the meantime, the December 20th special meeting of the Evanston City Council stands adjourned. Happy holidays, folks.